March 14th, Neshoba Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. We have a jam-packed agenda tonight, so we're going to jump right in. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is Citizens Comments. Are there any folks that have anything they'd like to share with the committee? Nope? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the School Committee Chair Updates. Rather than me fill you guys in, because right now this meeting is really, we're going to be here until the budget is done, because we have a regional agreement that specifies it's got to be completed and adopted by tomorrow. So, the school committees brought their jammies and their pillows. But in the meantime, I'm going to turn my time over to Isabel, who is our student rep, because I think we're all dying to hear how today went at the high school, so please jump in.
Okay, so I'll save that till the end. I'll just start off with the music department news. So, this weekend, the high school is presenting at King &amp; I, and they will have three shows, Friday and Saturday beginning at 7:00 PM, and a Sunday afternoon show starting at 2:00 PM. Tickets can be bought at the door. Next week, there will be a high school choral concert on Tuesday, beginning at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $5 and can be bought at the door. Also, next week, there's a high school band concert on Thursday, beginning at 7:00. Tickets are $5 and can be bought at the door. Next weekend, the high school concert band, concert choir, and chamber choir will be competing in Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Concert Competition. Each group will perform in front of three nationally-recognized music educators and receive feedback on their performance on how to improve as a group. Additionally, each ensemble will receive 30 minutes in a clinic with one of the judges. The following Wednesday, March 28th, is the Second Annual Neshoba Jazz Night. This is a night where all of the jazz bands across the district will showcase their ensembles and then come together for one song to end the concert. The concert will begin at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. On to athletics. The girls' basketball team lost a heartbreaker last Monday night to Medway by one point. The team battled the entire game, and we are very proud of them. Our alpine ski team competed in the state championship last Tuesday, and Katie Bateman placed eighth overall in the state. The girls' ice hockey co-op team fell to number-one seeded Wellesley Team on Monday night at the Warrior Ice Arena in the state semifinals. And it may not seem like it, but spring sports start on Monday. Ms. Rich is working on figuring out a schedule for all of our teams to try out and practice, seeing as everything is covered in snow. The DECA group and club competed at the state conference of competition this past weekend in Boston. We had many successful groups placed in the top 10, and 16 students qualified to advance to the national competition that will take place this April in Atlanta. For those of you unfamiliar, DECA is a business-focused club and group, and groups compete in different, both solo and in a group, pitching different business plans, presentations, and financial exercises. Lastly, the schools across the district participate in the national walkout today. Neshoba had an estimated half of the school leave for those 17 minutes, and the town hall discussion went well. Students were able to interact with community leaders, and it's being very much a success.
Does anybody have any questions? Isabel?
No, and I think Principal D. Domenical may have a comment or two that he might want to add. I just want to add a couple of things with regards to this afternoon. I think, and I'll leave it to Principal D. Domenical to maybe add some things on this morning, because I wasn't there for this morning, but certainly this afternoon. So, maybe if you can just describe in a little bit more detail how the afternoon played out, because I don't think people even know necessarily what we did today, so that might be important.
So, in addition to the walkouts this morning at 10:00 AM to 10:17 AM, hosted in the afternoon was two separate occasions, one for freshmen and sophomores and one for juniors and seniors to discuss with the chief of police, state representatives, both Kate Hogan, Jamie Elbridge was there for part of it, representative from Clinton, and our district emergency task force and your school.
Lisa Gilbert, yeah.
Yep. So, we were able to discuss with all of, you know, answer student questions basically in the auditorium, have people understand what plans are in place. Students were open to request questions through an online form since last Friday, so there have been students that have developed, and then we've picked out some questions that could be reoccurring. So, it was really, really seductive, in addition to just having the actual walkout.
And student-led as well, and I think that that's important for folks to know. I know that you were very actively involved in this, and I know that you did some reading this morning that has received some rave reviews this afternoon for the work that you did this morning on that, so thank you for that. And Principal D. Domenical, maybe you can...
Yeah, I think events like the ones we had today really add so much to the climate and culture of a given school, and there's no way, given the, and we're serving the masters of the bells, the school bells, so you can't, each session was brief, but I think it allowed students a chance to hear that others share their concerns. They learned what they can do about some things, even though they may not be a voting age or they may be near voting age, what options were open to them and what possibilities exist. And I think the common refrain that many of our panelists had was, "Don't let it end here." You know, "Don't let it stop here." Whatever drives you, whatever change you want to see, you've got to ask for it, you've got to work towards it, and that was the message that was reiterated again and again. Student questions ran the gamut, from being very specific regarding safety in a given school to broader questions about the political process.
So, we really came out of two lenses, really, the safety lens and the civics lens. And so, the questions really varied along those two lines, and so I think that was really important, too. It was a great opportunity. You know, the schools worked so hard to remain apolitical, like, you know, and I thought that we really did a nice job today of that. I'm very appreciative of the panelists, as you say. You know, we had Representative Hogan there, Representative Notten, Senator Elbridge was there, Chief Nelson was there, and Lisa Gilbert. And I think that the panelists did a really good job, but the fact that it was student-led, and I just thought, folks just did amazing. I was so proud of Neshoba Regional High School today. Just really, really good work for all of you. Any questions on today?
No. Neil?
Just a quick comment. So, on the social media aspect, I'm going to go back to the rally that you had, and there were a ton of people who were all upset because we were changing things, changing things, and it was a different rally, they didn't know how it was going to turn out, et cetera. It turned out to be pretty fantastic. Kids had a great time, they want to redo this again. This really appeared a little bit, again, on this particular event on the social media, but I noticed it dropped off considerably. So, I think there's that, the growing trust that it's going to be handled and it's going to be done with the kids at mind is starting to take hold, which I think is great.
Great comments, very much appreciated.
It's tricky, too, because it wasn't our that. So, you know, it's, we had to change some things because the track was full of snow and they go up the field, so we got to kind of, you know, create a plan B. But really, what we're there to do is just make sure that everyone is safe, and I can't thank Chief Nelson enough, he brought out a number of officers to help kind of keep things rolling, and the kids were terrific, and so it wasn't...
And I really appreciate the fact that I had a bunch of parents reach out and residents reach out to ask what they can do, could they become part of it, and, you know, it's, you want to say yes, but it really is for the students and it is their thing, and so, you know, kind of sending that message was, we're, I mean, we weren't even going to be there because it's important that it is, the kids, you guys, get a chance to speak and do what you need to do, and I think parents really responded well to that, to trust the fact that, I keep calling you kids, I'm sorry, but I'm old, so, but that the students could handle it in tandem and being guided, you know, with the trusted staff. So, thank you all so much for that. It's a really positive thing in our communities, that people have a chance to speak and do it in a productive way.
And the last thing I just want to stress is there was a definite diversity of thought in the students that did participate. It was not just one group of students who all about the same thing. I have to say, I was honestly taken aback and surprised a little bit by the number of people and the number of people I wouldn't think that necessarily you might think as a political issue wouldn't increase, but in general, we can all kind of rally around the idea of school safety, so I thought that was particularly special.
And that was the point, right?
Exactly.
So, thank you both, appreciate it.
Thanks to the staff that were involved, too. Much appreciated, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, I'm going to leave, ask Principal D. Domenical to stay on, because we've got a couple of special guests that we want to recognize tonight. So, we've got two students that we want to recognize, and we've got a teacher that we'd like to recognize tonight. So, if you can start, and we'll fill in.
Sure. We are so pleased to be here to talk about the work these three people do at Neshoba. The three people are Hannah Kastner, Haley Neff...
There's Hannah.
And Elspeth McDonald. And Hannah and Haley were recognized at the Worcester County Superintendent Scholars Breakfast. It's quite an impressive event. Every school in Central Mass is putting forward their one or two scholars, and their CV is read, and it just kind of makes your job drop a little bit, and you see what so many of these young men and women are accomplishing at so young an age. I'm going to start off with Hannah. Hannah Kastner, the daughter of Paula and Tim Kastner of Lancaster, is a student of accomplishment who pursues a rigorous academic program while also making time to pursue artistic interests and contribute to her community through various service programs. As a member of Neshoba's class of 2018, Hannah has taken seven AP courses and 14 honors classes. She has participated in multiple mission trips, both in the U.S. and abroad. She's been awarded the Golden Award Project, which is the highest honor available in the Girl Scouts, and pursues her interest in various forms of dance, such as ballet, tap, and jazz. Hannah has been awarded the Harvard Book Award and received five Academic Excellence Awards. She's sworn in a 99% town nationally and is a committed student in the National Merit Program. Hannah, congratulations on your accomplishments, and thank you for all you've brought to Neshoba Regional High School. Haley, I'm just going to swing my chair around here so I can see. Haley Neff, the daughter of Deena and T.L. Neff of Stowe, is a student of accomplishment who pursues a rigorous academic program while also serving her community as a certified EMT and represents Neshoba as an athlete. As a member of Neshoba's class of 2018, Haley has a decorated transcript with 19 honors and AP classes. Her accomplishments show her leadership. She's a crew chief in our demanding EMT program and was a varsity volleyball captain and led the team to districts. She also served as the vice president for our Model UN program. She has been awarded with the Yale Book Award and has been recognized as a National Merit finalist. Haley participated in the Beth Israel Deaconess Summer Health Corps Program, a six-week volunteer medical internship. Haley, congratulations on your accomplishments, and thank you for all you've brought to Neshoba Regional High School.
And just quickly, before we wind down, I want to just bring from what Principal D. Domenical was saying. When you go to this particular event, it is really the cream of the crop that are at that particular luncheon. And I have to tell you, I was so proud of both of you as I sat there that day. You are just wonderful representatives of our district, and you represent all we stand for, and I thank you so much for your hard work, just really, really proud of you, thank you.
So, moving on...
Moving right on.
Let's just ducking away, doesn't want to threaten us here, but let me talk about the life changer award of the year, the award, which is sponsored by National Life Group, an insurance organization. It honors educators who exemplify excellence, positive influence, and leadership. It comes with a considerable cash prize, split between the individual and the organization of their choosing. Every day, Elspeth McDonald makes an impact on the lives of her students at Neshoba Regional High School. Elspeth is a social worker responsible for providing practical and emotional support to students with wide-ranging issues. Without Elspeth in the programs she supports, many of her students would struggle in a public school setting on a daily basis. She is also the advisor for Neshoba's award-winning Best Buddies Chapter, co-advisor along with Daniel McDonald. She also functions as a counselor with the school's critical incident, or the critical incident team. If there was such a thing as a typical day for Elspeth, she might begin her day before the school bell rings, attending a best buddies meeting. She would meet with students for counseling sessions, attending a meeting to discuss at-risk students, take students for a walk around the school, connect a family with outside assistance, and screen a student for safety. Most of all, Ms. McDonald smiles and shares her unbounded enthusiasm and professionalism, I might add, with everyone around her. She's constantly coming up with activities, giving students and staff the opportunity to discover and acknowledge the best in themselves and one another. Elspeth has been, has long been an advisor of our nationally-recognized chapter of best buddies. Best Buddies Neshoba is a volunteer group that creates opportunities for one-to-one friendships between students with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities. To say that the Neshoba chapter is extremely active would be an understatement, and Elspeth spends many afternoons, evenings, and weekends attending the myriad dances, fundraisers, movies, and more that she has helped organize throughout the year. On occasion, she is called away, that is because she is a counselor with a critical incident team outside the school, which assists first responders when they've had to deal with traumatic events in the course of their jobs. Excuse me. 16 years ago, she spent weeks helping first responders get through the ordeal of searching for survivors at Route 0. The individual who nominated Elspeth said the following. "As far as I'm concerned, whether in a school setting or not, Elspeth McDonald is not only a life changer, she is a lifesaver, a true hero. No one could be possibly more deserving of this honor. Thank you, Elspeth McDonald."
Okay. That'll get us going for the night. Thank you all so much for coming. Appreciate all of your efforts. Our next presentation is with the Luther Burbank group of folks who are going to be talking to us on student learning and the five Cs and eighth grade social security... Social Security. We talked about the A's. Social Studies!
And I think we've got, and there she is, she's probably going to cheat on the floor.
She's going to lie by the TV.
So, the students are going to introduce themselves, they're prepared to do so, but thank you for this opportunity to share with you just a snapshot of learning at Luther Burbank. So, I'd like to thank Mr. Greg Newkin, who is our ITF specialist at Luther Burbank, Laura Pagington, who is our eighth-grade social studies teacher, Kylie Nelson, Erin DiTulio, Adam Mayes, Veery Christopher, and Lauren Bastieri. And with that, if you're ready, Kylie's going to start us up.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a snapshot of our learning for eighth-grade social studies class at Luther Burbank. I am Kylie Nelson. Tonight, you will hear from Lauren Bastieri, Veery Christopher, Alista Tulio, and Adam Mayes, who are here this evening with Ms. Friend and their teachers, Mrs. Paddington and Mr. Newkin. We will be sharing with you a glimpse of our eighth-grade social studies class, in which we have learned about civics, government, and United States history. Our class is student-centered and focused on the five Cs of learning. You may have heard of the four Cs in 21st century learning, but for us at Luther Burbank, there are actually five. Choice is our fifth C, and adds to the other four, which are critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. We know that by developing our skills in these areas, we will be prepared for high school and beyond. Tonight, we are going to show you some examples of how these five Cs come to life in our class. Alissa starts off by speaking about the first of our five Cs, which is choice.
The first C is choice. This year, we've been able to demonstrate the topics we are learning in class. In some ways, we show our knowledge in through WeVideos, GoAnime cartoons, raps, thing links, and presents. Mrs. Paddington makes sure that many of our assignments give us choice. Students get to show what they've learned in a way that interests them. As we create our presentation, we learn to decide what we want to show and what we want our audience to learn. Now, here's a video that highlights some of the projects we've been working on this year in class. The veto power is one of the most important powers of the executive branch. It gives the president more power over the nation's laws. The veto power is to stop a law from passing. The president is always, always willing to veto a law. Are you sick and tired of living in the dark?
Our dinner's from Target, and it's a good one.
The light bulb is a powerful, convenient, and flexible appliance that works through wire, cast, or local light, giving you power. It provides light and allows people to see at night with an equipment that's made much safer than kerosene lamp.
Well, it costs you right down to the spinal cord, and it was changing your life. This may seem like a spurn, but it's a great idea to purchase the lights.
We enjoy falling to your certain death because your train can't break. If not, we have the product for you. It's the air brake invented by George Westinghouse. Other trains need to have the brake manually applied to each train car, which leads to many derailments and fatalities. But the newest air brake ensures a safe ride for all passengers. The second C is critical thinking. To me, critical thinking is interpreting the problem and handling it in the most logical way you can. In all of our classes, we learn to work through problems using our critical thinking skills. When faced with challenges during assignments, we learn to problem-solve issues based on the vision we are hoping to achieve. Now, here's Adam, who's presenting the third C, creativity.
My ed-up party project, we were told to use WeVideo, and I thought, why not do stop motion? I did get a kit for my birthday, so I used that creativity that my mom says I have, and I made a video using stop motion. To make it, I used an app that would take pictures and use them as a video. This is just one of the many ways that we showed the third C, creativity, in school. Now Kylie and Veery with the fourth C.
In the light bulb commercial, you saw collaboration highlighted. Veery and I had a choice to work together. We learned how to work as a team and bounce ideas off of each other. In social studies, we work on projects such as simulations and group conversations. Simulations help us to not only learn content, but how to work together. Group conversations help us to hear other students' opinions and ideas.
The eventual commercial taught us how to use one of the five Cs of cooperation. This is an important skill to have in the future. Our final C is communication ability.
This year, our learning has allowed us to show our thinking and what we want in our own ways. Each project shows a different style of learning and how everyone thinks. We show communication in multiple different ways. Every time we present, our communication skills grow. During class, we always have group discussions and lots of dialogue that allow us to hear other people's ideas and thoughts. We can respectfully disagree with one another and see other points of view. Communication is an important aspect in learning, and our projects in in-class discussions help us display our thoughts and give ourselves and our peers a new point of view. It's been our goal to bring a little bit of our learning to you. We use choice, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication to show our learning and thinking in our own ways. It's all very exciting. Thank you for your time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, you have any questions? Neil?
So, I love what you guys all did, great job on the presentation. When you're doing things on the computer, using whether it's apps or creativity or whatnot, do you find in classes that you're doing that, that there's a different way of, is it different as far as how you learn, or what you learn, how you remember, et cetera, versus, let's say, a class that isn't doing that?
Well, I think that it helps, especially for me, to remember what we've been learning, because you get to, like, repeat, like, for my video, it took me a couple tries, so I kept remembering what the criteria was and what the information was, so it helped me learn the material better than in a normal class when we just take a test or something like that.
You have a question? Well, you guys did an awesome job, thank you so much, and thank you so much for all the work that you've done.
Very proud of them.
You should be.
I love the look.
Thank you so much. Thanks for bringing... Your students are us. Okay, I'd like to go on now. I think we have a great meeting. And now we get into the business portion of it. Hi, Mr. Newkin, bye, Mr. Newkin.
Thank you.
Mr. Newkin is my daughter's teacher. He's awesome. Oh, one more fun thing, DECA donation acceptance.
I think I'll get to that.
So, Starbucks and Groffus, the advisors for the DECA program at the high school, is requesting the total donation in the amount of $2,000 provided by the Clinton Savings Bank to the Neshoba DECA program.
So, once again, Clinton Savings Bank has been such a supportive partner to the district schools, so we want to thank them, and I'd be looking for, I always look at you, would someone be to make a motion to accept the generous donation?
I'm moved that the district accepted donation from the Savings Bank for DECA in the amount of $2,000.
Thank you. And a second, second can't be. Any questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
I have a question. Yes?
At future date, can we see how DECA is structured and how they...
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we can ask Mr. Aiden to come?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's a great idea, because it's a cool program.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're gonna move into the old business portion of, we've got a couple of things to go over. These aren't new subjects. The stabilization fund update is gonna be...
Pat's gonna come and speak to you about the stabilization fund, and I know that we have lots of discussion around the table about stabilization funds, the fact that we would like to do this, and we know that we need to, if we're going to put it on the upcoming town hall meetings, we need to have a vote on it so that we can submit this to our communities. So, Pat's just gonna kind of go through some things quickly with you and introduce some of the formalities that need to happen in order for us to do this. So, Pat?
So, what I wanted to bring forward is some information on the stabilization fund, as to, you know, what the actual process is of establishing this fund. First of all, a regional school district, Mass. General Law, Section 16G and One Half relates to the stabilization fund. And what it says is that the district may, upon a majority vote of all of its members, with the approval of a majority of the local appropriating authorities of the member municipalities, establish a stabilization fund and may in any year include it in its annual budget for deposit in the stabilization fund. So that's kind of just a quick overview of what this is, what this entails. So, what you need to do is first of all, decide exactly which stabilization funds you want to bring forward, vote on them, and then a letter will go out to each of the member communities telling them what our intent is, and they can put it on their warrant.
For town meeting.
For town meeting.
So, I'm wondering if we need to have the budget and warrant? Does this originated with Pat and Budget and Warrant making the recommendation? So, do you folks have recommendations on what?
So, well, we came forth, as you recall, a couple weeks ago with a recommendation to move forward, and then it was kind of brought back to us about creating some details and parameters about the particular funds.
Yeah.
And we have not actually had that conversation, unfortunately. The meeting was canceled today where we would have had that conversation, so...
Do we need to...
As far as fleshing out the details.
Do we need to identify an appropriation for these funds, or do we just need to vote to set the funds up?
My understanding, based on what Pat's saying, is you're just, you're setting the fund, you're voting to set up the fund.
Okay.
And then each cycle annually, you would vote to make a contribution to that particular fund. But I think the question that had come up, I don't know if it was so much the, it was just, we kind of were looking to get a little more clarity, come back, talk about, okay, for instance, turf field fund, what would that include? Is it for just the turf? Is it for resurfacing the track also? Is it for the tennis courts in addition? The whole purpose in my mind that that even came up was because we know that the turf, which is the title of the proposed fund, the turf and the track both need to be resurfaced at a given point in time, and it's a considerable cost. And so, in theory, if we're, just like a savings account, our, you know, our holiday fund, we're putting a little bit away for that day that we know is going to happen, rather than getting hit really hard at the end and having it blow apart, E and D or whatever. That said, it can't be taken and used for bleachers or something like that, or for expanding a product. The other one, as far as, the other proposed one was for, essentially, the high school. And that was more like a capital projects type of fund that we were looking at for the high school. And that one, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we have, obviously, you know, if we had a fund that existed right now, we'd be looking at the septic system, for instance, would be something that at least would be able to be subsidized by that fund. You know, so there is, there is merit for that, especially if we're looking at repairs or, you know, multiple truck projects over. You know, we have to remember that when we're building or renovating the high school, there's still going to be a number of years in between that we're going to have to meet the needs structurally for the building that's being used. So, the question is, do we just hit that as things arise, or do we have some sort of fund that exists and perhaps dissolve the fund at a certain point in time and whatnot? But these are all things we need to go into big detail about, as far as specifically what would something like a high school capital expense fund?
So, I, thank you for that. So I guess I have two questions, and one is just, Pat, do you know, just for everybody's understanding, rather, do you know what the turf field replacement for that carpet or the pellets or whatever is? I think it would be helpful for people to know. What is that?
Carpet and pellets two-in-one.
So does anybody know, do you, do you know what?
Well, the pellets are replenished every... Yeah, there's an annual replenishment that we do.
Okay.
So that's, that would be part of our regular maintenance.
Okay, but the carpet itself?
The carpet itself, I don't recall what the exact cost is, but I know it's in excess of $300,000.
It's well into six figures that it costs. I haven't heard that figure.
I heard you.
But it is well into the six figures, and then annual maintenance, and I'm just taking a guess, I'm trying to remember this, but I think it's between $15,000 to $30,000 annually that it costs.
So that's why we're okay with that being part of just a traditional operating budget. Okay, so, so what, so Pat's looking for a vote here so we can get this to the towns and get it on the warrant, and I know that the towns are getting close to closing their warrants, so if there are decisions that need to be made, we need to have that discussion and get, get that done now.
Just for clarification, so the, the letter that would go to the towns is, would have the stabilization fund specifically for expenditures related to turf field and athletic facilities for the district.
For one of the funds, yeah?
One of the funds. And I think what I hear Neil saying is that perhaps the focus should be a little more narrow than athletic facilities, which is...
Yeah, I think we were just looking at some templates, but please don't hold us to anything on this. It was just creating a template for you.
So, if we, if we vote to send these letters forward, does that prohibit us from changing what we call the stabilization fund? Because it sounds like what we're looking for is a fund to address specific things related to the fields.
I think we could do that tonight, right?
Make a decision, or?
Yeah, yeah. We could say we want one fund for the athletic field and the track.
Yep.
Period.
Yep.
And we want one fund for the high school, because I seen here it says the facilities, and I don't know that we would want to cover all the facilities.
Well, in the last meeting, I think somebody said, you know, facilities in general, and somebody said facilities for only the high school. So I just put facilities in this letter, so...
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, no, no, again, not a criticism. I think we're just trying to hone in on what it is. But I would, I don't know how you folks feel, but I think the high school's the building that we're most concerned about. And anything over $10,000 for each one of the other buildings is owned by the town. We're maintaining them. So I don't, I feel more comfortable just saying that fund is for the high school. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm comfortable specifying turf field and track, because the other thing is that, I think we talked about this in Budget and Warrant, but also in School Committee, that we could set up another stabilization fund, perhaps. And I think we did talk about facilities, but perhaps this would be a good first step.
So, I'm sorry?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, Ms. Martin?
So I do have a couple comments. I, I'm, over the last month, been thinking that it's best to both have it limited, but also have it be somewhat general. My point of view is perhaps all exterior athletic facilities or fields would be perhaps the most useful for our, for the long run. Similarly, on the district, I would propose that we think about capital expenditures for the entire district. That way, we can include, you know, if we have some difficulties in our IT department. And include, because here, for example, there's an occasion where that's not necessarily an annual budget item, but it could be considered for the stabilization fund purposes. So whatever is eligible for capital expenditure district-wide, I just call it general.
So not to constrain it.
Yeah, I wondered about, like, the fleet of vehicles that, is that part of the...
Not, not facilities.
So that, that just gets planned for and built in the budget that would reduce the...
So, I'm with Kathy on that. I, I like the idea of more narrowly focusing things, because this is really for, the origin of this was for the expense of the turf field, and I'm just, not to say that it's going to be misapplied and misused, but there could be other projects that we have no idea about, that a couple years down the line pop up, and somebody says, hey, why don't we take that money there, because we have access to it and put it there, and then we don't have the money for what we had originally intended for. So I would really be for limiting the scope of that particular fund. Facilities, and I hope that we would keep them separate when they go to the towns for conversation, because one may and one may not, you know. Facilities, it's a rabbit hole, I think, if we, and so we haven't, in fairness, we haven't had a conversation in BMW. So, I just, I worry about the way that the towns are perceived, equity and so forth. Well, you know, Bolton's paying for this, but Lancaster's getting this, or Lancaster's paying for this and Bolton's getting that. If we keep it applied to the high school, I think there's more merit to it. But I'm also worried about, you know, if IT isn't figuring their stuff out and they have a crisis, they need to figure it out. I mean, this, this can't become something that is a wish list or a go-to for a mess-up. Do you know what I mean? That's what E and D is all about, and now you have to come and make a real justification to the world for why things weren't planned properly. I only see it as an emergency type of fund for facilities that would be used for specifically something, well, no. E and D would be IT screw-up, like, there's a huge issue, but I look at like a septic system that we're running into now. Something like that, to me, would be worthy of like a stabilization fund for things like that. And it would need to be, in my mind, defined so that it would be for emergency, unanticipated, et cetera, use, not for, you know, we have a couple vehicles here, like, you know, the party bus.
Well, there's nothing wrong with having a planned expenditure, where we have a roof coming in 10 years that, you know, we're saving for that. Not an emergency, but a planned expenditure.
Hundred percent, total, total agreeable.
All right, other thoughts? Lynn?
The stabilization sounds great, but what I key come back to is, you know, if we don't define it prior to going in, it's like, where are the funds coming from? You know, we sold the fields to the town for the warrant, that it was going to be self-stained. And I know that it wasn't practical, we kind of didn't believe it, but it does generate revenue. And so, what I don't want is, I don't want these stabilization funds to just increase the budget. You know, and I don't want that to be a vehicle to increase the budget. I want it to be, you know, well thought out, and especially the fields, the field to make enough money that they can take care of this. I don't know why we have to, you know, increase the budget on this one.
I'm not sure that that's at all... I think you're...
I saw what that is. This is creating a fund, and you can take...
And where are the funds coming from?
Right, but you want, that's for the school committee to figure out when they put the money into the fund. So you're, what you're coming up, hold on, what you're coming up with, the exact situation you're coming up with can be applied, and those funds that are pulled in from ticket revenues can be dedicated via the school committee to that particular stabilization fund. We're creating the vehicle, what, we're, we're creating the piggy bank.
But you have, but you haven't defined any of this, so what's happening is you're going into the towns and you say, we'd like to create the stabilization fund. There's no perimeters, you don't know where the money's coming from, you don't know how it's going to get filled. And once it gets approved, doesn't matter.
MGL doesn't set it up that way. You've heard Pat read the, read, although I don't know what the other half of that law is.
But the plain English of this is, you get it approved, and then you set it up?
It says, you may in any year include it in your annual budget, or you could just, I would assume in any other year, you could say, we're gonna use gate receipts or whatever to...
So the problem that we have here is, I mean, the only continuity we have is Pat, because we all change out all the time. So there's no policy board.
That's the law, though.
No, and I get that, but it's, you could make it whatever you want. You could just say, well, you know, you can never really put perimeters on it, so let's just add to the budget.
Well, continuity would be as described in the town warrant, which, thanks to our town, our council will describe exactly what the fund is and what it is not, and therefore, it'll...
So we're gonna let the towns set the perimeters?
No, we will have to write the warrant articles for these two things, for these two funds, and then we will submit them to the town.
This discussion here, is this a discussion to come to a vote before we actually have the perimeters developed?
I just think that we've got to have something, and I think it's the end of March, am I right on that, Dawn?
We gotta do it this week. They're signing it. The selectmen are signing the warrant March 27th.
Yeah, so we have, if we're gonna do it this year.
So, I'm gonna go back to a question I had, thank you, originally, which was, can we vote to set these accounts up? And then, you know, just to get this on the warrant, and then at a subsequent meeting, like a quick, quick, right after this, talk about how we're gonna fund, where we're gonna fund, the details of it? Can we do that?
I don't see any reason why you can't do that. I think for our purposes, we just need to get the language to the towns so that we can get stabilization funds on that warrant.
Because if we don't do it, then we have to wait until next year.
I don't think it's necessarily being looked at. It's, I mean, because when we talk about gate receipts or whatever, it's all part of the budget, as it is. So, it, so, it, does it increase the budget? No, it's dedicating the money that's being put in this budget, say for athletics or whatever, we're taking, whatever, and it's, it's going in there. It's not...
It's like Lynn, right now, we have a certain amount of money that goes, I'm gonna make up the, it goes to athletics. Instead of $100,000 going into the athletics account, and that's not a really good, that's a misnomer, but instead of $100,000 going in there, and then Pat applies those dollars to maybe, maybe the pellets, maybe new uniforms, maybe this. Instead of that, she's gonna put, I'm throwing a number out there, $10,000 of the $100,000 is gonna be earmarked specifically for the turf field and the track. So she's gonna put that $90,000 into that, into that athletic account, less the $10,000, which is gonna go into this account and is specific for those functions. That other $90,000 just gets put where it needs to be put to cover those areas, right?
But if it's not spelled out before we vote on it, is that really what's gonna happen?
But it says right in the letter that it's for the track, field, and, you know, Pat can change these letters to say for the track, field, and the carpet. You could say specifically the carpet. You don't even have to say for the, whatever it's called.
Turf.
Turf field.
It's a subject of the city.
Of the track.
Exactly.
Because right now, it's turf field and then any athletic facility throughout the district.
But you, did you hear what she just said?
I did, I did. But again, it, I mean, these, who's checking these to see that this is what goes back to whatever? So, there's that one, okay? Again, right now...
Who's checking, I don't...
So this letter, we're going to take this letter and say, we are going to approve it per whatever changes.
We're gonna vote to establish a stabilization fund for the track, field, whatever we're gonna call it.
Changing it.
Right, that's all we're doing.
We're changing the language on the vote.
Right.
We're not voting to approve that and then hoping it gets changed.
Okay, and, and, don't get me wrong, I mean, you keep thinking that I don't want a stabilization fund, and I think it's fine. I just want perimeters, because we've lived through abuse of this stuff.
So, I guess, but I don't...
Not that you guys are gonna abuse it, but...
I don't understand something. If this is, this is to me, within the, you know, president administration excluded, but this to me is an insurance policy that that money isn't gonna be used for anything other than, you can't take that money.
As long as you write it correctly, but then again, we don't talk, the way it's written, all right, no, we're changing. The way it's written right now, it can go anywhere in the district.
Okay, so stop. We just admit, we just, I think we all agreed unless somebody disagreed. We just admit, we just, I think we all agreed unless somebody disagrees, that one of the stabilization funds, and it may be the only one we do tonight, but one of them is to establish a stabilization fund for the resurfacing of the track, the high school track.
Yeah.
And replacement of the turf field carpet. I don't know if we want to say carpet or we just want to say turf field. That's it, that's what it is. So anything that goes into that account each year when we sit down and talk about the budget and say, hey, Pat, how much money do you want to put, budget more, and how much money do you guys want to put in that account? We decide what we're going to put in that account. Nobody, no, that money can't go anywhere other than to these, to the, these two things. Right? From that fund.
Can I give a try on this one? Can I make a motion to establish a stabilization fund for the purpose of the high school turf field replacement and the high school track resurfacing?
Okay.
Carpet, carpet replacement or just replace, whole turf field replacement or it's carpet?
The turf, the turf field, no, it would be, it would be a process, it'd be a sublayering.
Well, that will just sublayer the pellets?
No.
For resurface of the track and replacement?
Of the turf field. Just leave it there. And Mark has seconded the motion.
And we don't say anywhere that, that it'll be?
We can set it up and not put money into it.
No, I mean, it's fine, I just want it supported by.
That's it, that's the motion. That's, that's what the fund would be. The motion is funded, we're not authorizing anything else.
So again, when we say to Pat, you know, okay, we, we vote on it every year, we say, okay, Pat, we want to put X amount of dollars into it. And so Pat takes the money and she just adds to the budget?
No, she has the money from, she has her big old bucket of money and we say carve out $20,000 and stick that in the stabilization fund. It's not like we're going to the towns and saying, we need another $20,000 bucks.
To add to the budget, right.
It's our, it's part of what we're, what we're dealing with.
Do we want to write that in the motion?
No, why would you do that? I mean, because.
Because that's where it comes from.
Because, think about it, no, because then you're parsing out everything. We, we have a bucket of money that we try to manage to and that bucket of money gets sliced up and diced up and put into different areas.
Right.
We just don't want to increase the budget because.
No, eight years, we don't want, we don't want somebody eight years from now sitting there saying, why the heck didn't they figure this out eight years ago that we go to the town?
And all the accounts came through and $20,000 was in that stupid budget.
All right, so now we have one stabilization fund developed, created, voted on. Oh, did we vote?
No, we didn't vote.
Okay, we like, any other like pressing questions? And Lynn, your, your comments are well received.
No, don't worry about it.
And if not, all those in favor? And all those opposed? Lynn is opposed, the motion passes seven to, nope, six, six to one.
Why are you reading this?
Yeah.
Establish a stabilization fund for the purpose of resurfacing the track and replacement of the turf field at the Michelle Regional High School.
And I think it's going to be important when that goes to submission for the warrants that we know what the range is so that people understand this is not like a 25, $50,000 thing, it's several hundred thousand dollars, just to give people perspective. I think it would be helpful.
And I guess we sample.
Yeah, that's great.
What it looks like on a warrant, I don't know.
All right, okay, so we're going to move now. Do we want to discuss an additional stabilization fund or, or not?
How do we want for capital?
At the high school or to Mark's point?
District-wide.
District-wide. Kathy?
So with the first one, it's likely that money's generated from gate receipts, usually the field, would be considered for that fund.
And I think that that, that how that's going to happen is going to come bubble up from budget and warrant?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Now, this other one is much broader.
Well, it doesn't have to be huge, right?
But if it stays the way it is, where do you foresee money in the bucket would come from for that?
You're going to.
Because that bucket is pretty well spoken for, accounted for, you know, netted out.
Yep.
So I think that, I just think this one is, is too broad and in the interest of time, I think I would be more comfortable with the one and then take the time to really figure out, it's just too broad.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't defined it yet and we don't need to kind of hash through it tonight. Because I, I hear what you're saying, but I want it to be more defined. I'm not comfortable.
We didn't find it tonight, we can try.
Well, all righty, let's take a couple of quick minutes because you know, did you bring your jammies?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good.
My computer.
So Mark's perspective, I'm just going to put them both out here and then jump in. Mark's perspective is let's not, let's not constrain the, the use of this particular fund to just the high school because there may be additional district, not just, not facilities, not school buildings, but district needs that crop up that we would need this money for. I would contend that E and D would handle that. Neil is saying, what are you saying? You say too much, so I don't remember what you said.
IT's on their own.
IT's on their own.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah, right.
I would even use the IT as an example, quite frankly.
They don't even have a plan.
Since we're having this specific conversation, I think it's a hard thing to do right now to set up the fund. I think ideally for fiscal response, responsibility, it's a great idea, but I think we're struggling, we're struggling to put money into OPEB, we want to put money into OPEB. This is, the turf field is a definite that we know is on the horizon. We're looking at the high school new revamped bond, you know, I mean, this, this combination of things. And we're looking as, we're seeing the budget out there, E and D levels are going to be at historic lows right now. So all of those things don't lend to having a good savings account.
Okay.
And that's just my, that's just my take, but I think more specificity, that is it?
Specific, whatever.
Right. So would be, would be.
Okay. So Lynn?
And just mark the future, as a taxpayer, if there was a stabilization fund for the whole district, as soon as something over $10,000 came up, I'd say, you've got a stabilization fund, what are you funding it for?
Well, because there's not enough money in the stabilization fund to handle the big things that we know are coming.
No, I just.
Roofs at the high school, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But that's the high school, the high school, all three of us.
So that's a big thing we know is coming and the future school committee is going to be wary about spending $20,000 here and $20,000 there when they know it's a future thing that's, they're trying to avoid getting, putting in for a bond.
Yeah, so you're talking high school, but I'm talking, you wanted it to go for the whole district. And, and that's where I would say, no.
So for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
I move that we establish a stabilization fund for the high school within this Michelle Regional School District.
Okay.
For capital expenditure at the high school.
At the high school. I'm going to ask for a second.
That's awesome.
Okay, so my question is, Elise, so my question is, if we decide we don't want, if we decide to change this, can we do that with a vote? But it's going to town meeting, so I don't, on the warrant, so I don't know if we rush into doing this and then we decide we want to change it. Do we have to go back to town meeting to change it, which would make sense, and I don't know.
You need to go back to the authorizing legislatures before the town meetings.
Does the law, I mean, I've read it a bunch of times, but that doesn't mean I've totally processed all of it. Is there anything in here that specifies? I see it's specified like the amount, you know, no more than 5%, et cetera, that specifies this has to be named and for something specific? Or is it a stabilization fund? You know what I mean? Like if we call it amongst ourselves, we say this is going to be for capital expenditures, does it have to be named? Or is it, and then that's, holds you to that forever and ever? You know what I'm saying? Like, and even with the turf field, if we name it turf field, legally that then means nothing.
I would think that if you're going to the residents of the towns and saying, can we do this, and you're telling them we're doing it for this reason, you would have to hold to what that is because they're voting on that.
Right, and so if you're more broad, does that mean you can't, you know what I'm saying? Like, does that mean we can't get narrow afterwards if we start out?
You're going to have to go back and, well.
Or would they have to vote on it again to say, well, initially we said it was sort of a stabilization fund for.
Facilities. And now we just wanted to be the high school.
And now we want to just say it's only for the roof.
I don't know why you would want to go back and do that. If you went that broad brush, why would you even go back and, I mean, you could, but I think again, if you, if you want to change the name of it, I think you probably have to go back and.
And vote again.
If you're going to change the name of it, right? But if it's just one component of a broader thing, I think we're kind of rat-holing right now. Again, I just, I, I think for.
My question with that was because if we bring it to the town because we, and we say it's capital, you know, expenditures or whatever.
For the high school.
For the high school, does that then, you know, and like, why, what would we be concerned about with creating this accounts now? It's not that it's locking us into anything in particular, but it's creating a savings account. You get what I'm saying? Like, I don't.
It's opening a savings account without putting any money into it yet and identifying what it's for. Right. Just a, a quick thought here. I, I think the, the big thing for us was the turf field, right? I mean, that, that's like, that's inevitable, we know that's coming. There's no reason for anyone to feel rushed on this other, there just isn't. And, and I think that we work so hard to be so thoughtful on just what, everything that we do. I, I don't, I don't want anyone in this room to feel rushed on this. And if we don't do it this year, it's okay from my perspective. If you want to take more time to think on it, the one that we really needed was that turf. So I'm, I'm very comfortable and I'm very appreciative of having the first one. Are we good? Do we want to see if the motion passes?
Have you have to.
All those in favor of establishing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, Elise did. All those in favor of establishing a stabilization fund for the purpose of the Michelle Regional High School alone? All those opposed? The rest of all y'all, the motion fails. Okay, we're moving on. Thank you, that was really good conversation though. Thank you. Okay, OPEB. Oh, geez.
This is quite the night.
Oh, we got to get through it.
Pat's going to, Pat's going to stay up here too and just talk you through a couple of things. Again, even with OPEB, I, I want to make sure that you feel that, that we've been thoughtful with our work in this area. This is kind of us just taking a look at the next steps, you know, kind of orchestrating a little bit more structure now. And we know that we're doing this, we've got money set aside, we've had a couple of organizations come in and talk to you about it. So what are some of those next steps? So we reached out, Pat reached out to Dr. Hammond, she also reached out to our legal team. So I think she's going to kind of present all of that. If, if you feel so inclined tonight to, to do something, great. If not, if you need more time to think on it, that's fine too. So there's no rush on this tonight either. So Pat, I'll turn it over to you and you can just walk, walk us through.
So Lorraine had asked me to give a brief overview of what OPEB is, so for those of us that, you know, don't know what OPEB is, you can go through this right now. Who is and what is? GASB is a governmental accounting standards board and it's, it's an independent source of generally accepted accounting principles. And basically what they do is they oversee all of the state and local government accounting practices. And GASB 43 and 45 statements are uniform standards for the reporting of OPEB. OPEB is other post-employment benefits. I skipped ahead a little too fast on that. And why are we funding OPEB? GASB recommends that the liability for health benefits paid on behalf of retired employees and their dependents be funded. Some, kind of like similar to retirement funds being funded.
So for, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
So retire, so retiree health?
Yes, it is.
So retire, so that's part of it, there's something else in there too, but retiree health, we pay, we pay as we go, right now. So anybody that's retired from the district who currently receives benefits, we're paying that. So the issue is that as more people are retiring and living longer, the expense is getting bigger and broader and we're not going to be able to, we and every other municipality and public school and entity are not going to be able to keep up, up with it. So this allows us to start to look at establishing a trust in order to do similar to what we just did, is to start putting money away to address that future liability. Right?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't mean to take your thunder, but.
No, that's fine, that's great. So basically, what we're doing is, as a district, is we have put aside some money to start to fund this actuarial, this valuation actually. And we have $150,000 put aside for this, where we want to establish a trust. We have $50,000 budgeted for fiscal year 18, which would bring it up to a total of $200,000. Our current liability, and that's as of, as of 12, 31, and 15, is $43,263,034. And what is our annual required contribution, which is the ARC? You hear people speak about what is the ARC? In order to meet that liability over a 30-year period, we would have to contribute $3,388,038. So.
For a, in, in a year?
In one year.
This year, in order to meet that actuarial target liability.
And that's in addition to the $1 million plus we have in already that pays for the?
That's it, well, it's in addition, yes.
In addition, yeah.
Lynn, Lynn has a question. Pat?
You've got, we've put in 150 initial investment and then you have budgeted it. I thought we put in 50,000 last year, no? Last year's budget?
We're, we're in fiscal year 18.
We're in 18 right now. We're, like, tonight would be 19.
Okay, so we actually have 200,000 in there.
We have 200,000 in there right now. As of this, because we have devoted the budget.
That would be another whatever.
That would be another 50, so.
Oh.
If we voted 50,000 in fiscal year 19 budget, we would have 250,000.
Okay.
So. So we, we talked about PRIM a couple of weeks ago about the, we thought that maybe PRIM was who we wanted to go with as far as our investment. And there were many reasons why, and I think Neil, we had discussed that, that was what your, the committee had brought forward.
Well, as far as the V and W, yeah, budgetary warranty, yes, establishment, but we didn't actually come to the conclusion of, or, or an opinion on trust, a trustee versus, versus a trusteeship committee, stewardship.
I, I think when we, when we kind of canvassed across the state, now, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we canvassed across the state, it seemed to be that the vast majority of, now, keep in mind too, a lot of people aren't doing what we're doing, we're being, I think, culturally proactive, but when we canvassed across, it seemed to be that most[1660.29] But when we canvassed across, it seemed to be that most of them had their treasurer. Is that right?
Yes, they have their treasurer.
That acts, so. Just whatever that's worth.
Vicki.
A long time.
Yeah. Ten years. At the same time, I did.
Yeah, that's right.
Does the treasurer have to have any kind of training for this?
Well, she's been, actually, she and you have been attending all these meetings, these initial meetings leading up to all this discussion. Just so you know, so it's not like she's been over there and not involved. She's actually been heavily involved in this.
Well, I'm just wondering, because I know that you have to have a special something, certification.
Like a certification or something?
The purchasing agent.
Yes, that's right.
You know, and I was just wondering if they require the same thing.
Was I surprised? No, I don't, no, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Great question. I don't have an answer.
Moving on, I wonder if anyone in the audience knows.
I'm sorry, Lorraine, what's the question?
I'm sorry, I'm going to break tradition here, but because we want to move the discussion along, do you want to ask a question?
So the purchasing agent usually has to get a, with the state that banks the certification. Yeah. Is there something similar to that, to being the treasurer for this?
The trustee is the town treasurer. Right. Do you need any special certification or training in order to be? Not to my knowledge, just.
Thanks. Sorry to put you on the spot. I figured you'd know given your.
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's talk about where we need to be with this discussion and move things forward. Because again, what are we being asked? Kathy, what?
Oh, no.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to answer your question.
Please do.
Well, I think this thing that's projected up is our next steps. It would seem, unless I'm reading it wrong, that these are things that we have to decide or vote on. Is that?
Yeah, so what I heard was we have two options. We can either hire someone to manage the trust or use the treasurer. Is that what I'm hearing?
No. Treasurer is the trust, treasurer would be the trustee for the OPEB fund. Who would do all, they would be the person to conduct the business with, let's say, PRIM.
Oh, all right. Oh, so we're identifying, okay.
They would be authorized to actually invest the funds for the trust.
Okay.
Could I just interject one thing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I will say our town treasurer doesn't work in a vacuum. She gets input from a number of sources. So I wouldn't rely on necessarily one person to make that decision. As our town has gone through this process with PRIM, Neil, you may or may not be aware of that, when we have funded, I think, quite well for a small town. As I had conversations with Ron Brown as well. So I'm just saying, there's input from a number of sources. The ultimate decision is made for by the town treasurer.
Yeah, and I can't say our treasurer just doing things without a lot of input, frankly, too.
Do you have that much power? Primi, the treasurer has that much power? I mean, the treasurer is it?
No, so on the legal documentation that came out, the opinion on forming the trust said that in most cases, the treasurer would have the rights to do the investing on their own. However, just like Stan brings up there, that's most cases, that's not all. And we could actually designate a process for that, too.
For example, the treasurer wants to continue to have their job and they probably pay a lot of attention to what the governing body has to say.
Right, but it's a way of still having the input without having this massive 13-person with all the special parameters and having the trouble of trying to find all those people to volunteer. So you can still, you can still add some parameters in there, just like Stan was talking about.
Well, can we talk about that? Because I'm just wondering, I mean, you have the treasurer, there'll be a board or something made up of interested?
No.
No.
So that's a decision. Treasurer is custodian or a board trustee for the OPEB trust.
Could you do, like, could you take the custodian, the treasurer as custodian? And instead of saying or, can you say in consultation with the smaller?
Well, that's setting, so that's how, that's just the directions on how it's set up. The fund. And you have to choose either having.
You have to choose either or.
Right. Either you have, like, a trust and trustee ship or with five to 13 individuals. Or you have one person that is a trustee, designated trustee of the fund.
So you just trust that they're consulting with others if you take that first step?
The treasurer technically is responsible to the school committee, too. So don't forget that if there's a consistent concern.
With the legal, with the legal opinion that was given on this, it left that door open that most, not all, but most allow the trustee to make the decisions, but not all. So we could inject some parameters in there. That this needs to be, you know, this investment decisions need to be brought forth before the superintendent and the school committee prior to the investment or something like that. So there's a present, you know what I'm saying? So there's some sort of.
So you know what I think we're, before I take Kathy's question, I'm kind of feeling like we need a recommendation to come forward from y'all and tell us exactly what you're recommending we do, rather than an open discussion where many of us are not quite sure. And we'd really like to rely on our peers, because you're going to kill me, aren't you?
So we need to have access, we need to have access to the attorney, then, to be able to actually ask a few questions to the attorney.
That's fine.
About how to set that particular, like, what are they talking about as far as the options if we don't go with, you know, a full five or 13?
So if you guys have questions, put them in an email and we'll get it to the attorney, have them respond. If there needs to be follow-up, we can do that. But I think that right now, we're not going to be able to solve for this. But what I would like, if you're all okay with that, and did you, because I want to talk about the funding for this year.
Yeah, I wanted to just raise an issue. It seems like people need to know more about how the treasurer would work as custodian of the OPEB fund. And I think to have more detail about what that actually looks like, what the person does, what the relationship that person has with PRIM would be is something that's, I think it's nebulous to me right now. So if we knew that, maybe that would allay concerns that the treasurer is going to take our $200,000 and run away with it.
On a $43 million liability.
No, I'm just kidding. But I'm just saying that there seems to be concern that one person has concentrated power.
All right.
So what does it look like? What does it look like for the treasurer to be the OPEB custodian? And what does it look like for the OPEB custodian, not treasurer?
So you're on budget and warrant. So here's what we're going to do. Anybody that has any questions about this, get them all over to me. We'll get up to budget and warrant. Those folks are going to do their thing with the attorneys and then we're going to move that discussion off because I think we're kind of going to go in circles.
It's on the agenda for both Tuesday and Wednesday next week.
All right, so get your questions.
We're meeting Tuesday and Wednesday?
All right, so we're back on track. We're back on track. We're back on track. So get all of your questions to me by Friday so I can get them to Neil. That would be wonderful. Unless you're on budget and warrant, and then keep your darn questions to your meeting.
Do, are these, are you giving us questions as budget and warrant are going to be? Are we sending questions at?
Neil is going to take all the questions about OPEB. You guys are going to come up with what your recommendation is. But in order to do that, he wants to ask some questions of the attorneys. So you're going to ask your questions of the attorneys and then whatever other questions there are will be asked and answered so that you guys can come forward, make a recommendation and have those.
Just because I need to have it.
Okay, so we're done with this part?
Wait, wait. So we send the questions to you. You give them to Neil.
I, well.
Budget and warrant looks over them. They go to the attorney, they come back, and then we have the discussion and make a decision. Is that the steps?
Yeah.
Are those the steps?
And if you're on budget and warrant, you don't have to send it to me.
Right.
Okay, great.
We can talk, please.
I'm going to move on now, guys, because we have a lot to do. So unless there's some substantial conversation we need to have about this, I think we need to keep moving. And the thing I'd really like us to do, because it is pertinent to tonight and what we're about to do soon, is talk about the funding level for OPEB. Because at the last meeting, there was a group of folks that felt strongly it should be $100,000. Other than the group of folks that felt, no, I only want it to be $50,000. And I think we need to come to some consensus on what that is. Right now in the budget, there's a, there's $50,000 in that account attributed to OPEB. Let's, Lynn.
Is there anything?
Yeah. It's, I mean.
It could be $50,000 and then the rest will work from.
Health insurance line item. It could be $50,000. And then establish, I think Neil, you had mentioned this, establish that it's 50 or 100 or 75 or whatever it is. But just realize that if it goes up from $50,000, it's got to come from somewhere else in that budget. So be aware of that. We're not going to be able to dictate to the administration where that comes from. So whatever the number is, just know that they're going to have to do some, whatever they do. But one of the other thoughts was, and I'm not going to take your words, I'm going to let you say, because it's a great idea, which is to take a baseline and then increase that every year based on the increase in the insurance cost.
That might have been Mark's idea.
Was it yours?
Maybe it was mine.
I had more.
Or was it not? No. But anyway, but there's another thought. It's like, pick a threshold and then, and then use that threshold each year to increase.
So along that line, where I stand, I'll bet $3.3 million. About a million and a half of that is as if you're paying down your mortgage. And you necessarily have to deal with that. But if we get to paying 100% of our annual incurred obligation, which is more or less a million and a half, maybe $2 million a year. Somehow manage to incrementally over time, get so we're paying even half of it, is a big step forward. And my conception, over time, say a decade, if we can manage to increase our payment by $100,000 a year, in 10 years, we will be approaching somewhere in the vicinity of half. Half. So if you're doing $50,000 a year, you have $500,000 a year you would contribute towards as the equivalent of a pension. And we would be in the vicinity of half to a third of necessary, which is a lot more than we're doing now. And it would keep us from having a burden of paying 20 years down the road.
You want to organize a basic?
Okay.
So that would be my perception of what incremental looks like. And it's significant.
It is significant. Neil?
So I have heard a type of, in tyranny, what I, but I take this with the approach of, I'm 64 and a half and I'm sitting down with my financial advisor and I'm saying I want to retire in a half a year. How much do I need? And I get about five grand in the bank, right? So I look at this and say, this is such an insurmountable amount that, like, how are we ever going to broach this with all of the things that are coming up? And I get, right, that it's worthy, but how are we going to do that, right? Without massive cuts, and I hate to, you know, without sending fear because we're not, but layoffs, everything else. I mean, we have to really impact the district in a hard way in order to make substantial money. But we have to address it, too. So somebody way smarter than me has to come in here and figure this, this thing out. Because I, this is an enigma to me. I just don't get it. And if we can put in what we can manage, which is just a token amount of money, truly, then, great. But I'd love to see a true path without impact. But honestly, and I'm still, it still means, it's on the back of the taxpayers. You know, if, you need so much to run the schools and if you're going to pay that, then that means you have to either cut the schools or increase the taxes. And I don't see a third alternative.
Well, third alternatives have an even bigger liability 10, 20, 30 years down the road. So that's your third alternative.
Right.
And it's basically it's an unfunded pension. We straightened out pensions over the last 30 years, probably funding it statewide. And so this is the next bite at dealing with pensions properly. And it costs money. We've agreed, we've agreed to support this to our employees. This is our promise. And so we have to pay for it. Somebody has to pay for it. And we're going to pay for it sooner or we're going to pay it later. And if it's later, it's going to be a lot more money.
True.
Everything, everything.
Okay. Susan and Kathy and Lynn and Elise, you need to have an opinion on this. So let's hear it. This is a big deal.
I think we have to, like you said, look at it. It's no different than any contractual obligation that we have on an annual basis. It has to come first. And then you have to look at what's left over. I hate to think that it would impact programming or staffing, but it's no different than the contracts that we have to be.
So what?
So I'd be more like, I'm thinking higher than the $50,000. As to start, but it seems like that doesn't, moving forward, I think it's a lot.
And Elise?
No, I mean, I'm saying, I agree with Mark. I think, you know, as painful as it is, we have to start incrementally adding more money, you know, to the level that we can bear. And in line with Susan, I don't ever want to see it affect programming and affects, you know. But it is a contractual obligation and it is something that we can't just keep pretending is never going to happen or keep pushing down the road for somebody else to deal with.
Lynn and Kathy.
Okay.
You have any?
No, sorry.
Thanks.
This, the last few years, we've essentially had level services budgets. They're level services. And the towns are still saying, we spend too much money, right? So now we're looking at making essentially OPEB funding a budget driver, something that rolls up front and that we have to work on. And I understand what the obligation is, but I also see the need in this district to start to look at ways to do some things with programming that we haven't been able to do. And I think we've put some things in place that we're going to see some benefits from down the line. But right now, I would have a really hard time agreeing to add anything else because I know the only way to get it in there would be to chip away at a budget that is level services. Now, the other thing I think we could start to do, and if anything would be added to this year's budget, whatever that amount is, it's going to have to be found someplace else. I'm not in favor of adding another dollar to this budget. Now, looking at some, perhaps some funding streams forward, it might not be like big streams, but we talked about any circumstances in the health insurance.
Right.
Okay? We look at the difference between what retired teachers make and what new teachers coming in make. We look at the difference. And maybe we could look at that and either do a percentage of that or a flat amount from that, but put that into, into OPEB. We have, somewhere along the line, I, if we fund a million of this upfront for this, what's the point of? How can we run the school even the way they are now? And they're great now. But we have so many other things that we need to be doing. It's just, that's, that's the dilemma. But I come down on the side of maintaining at least a level services budget and looking for other funding streams for that. And again, in terms of this year, I'm not for adding another nickel to this budget. And if the committee decides on an amount to add in, then administration will have to fund it and deduct that.
Lynn? And then I'm going to jump to Neil.
So based on what Kathy said, which sounded really good. Basically, I like the $50,000 because it's already in the budget. Right, you have it. But I'm going to put it back on you. I mean, we have had years where we've had $150,000 to throw in it. And if we can put another $150 in there, because.
I'm going to jump in on this one. Because, and because you and I, I think we were the only two that were here when that happened.
Yeah.
And the reason that that happened is because the way the budget was managed back then was kind of smoky and I really didn't get it. And it was a frustration point, which is where we had come to when I said that night, that $150 needs to go into that account. Because how can we? But I don't think we're there anymore. I think we're, I think the budget is being managed in a more realistic way than, you know, we've got a couple of, a couple of accounts here and a couple of accounts there.
Right. But I mean, I, I meant, Pat had her numbers up there. There was some, maybe it was maybe two meetings ago.
Oh.
She had put up, yeah, it wasn't tonight. And she had put up, you know, where we are, what she estimated, and there was some money left over. I mean, you do see that we're going to have a little bit of a surplus, but it was something.
Yeah.
Based on, even in the insurance line item?
Well, I don't know after this last snowstorm. Keep in mind, too, that Neil made a point tonight, and we're very conscientious of that E and D right now. As we try, I mean, honestly, I feel more, more strongly, I think, about trying to keep that E and D tight, to be honest with you. Because right now, we're trying to get off that wheel and this is not an easy piece for us at all. So, you know, if we talk a little extra, to be honest with you, I feel like we need that extra to go back into E and D right now.
But have we dipped into E and D this year?
$800,000.
Yeah.
To the budget.
It's in the, in the coming budget.
Okay.
And I think they attempted to run the budget with $500,000.
That's exactly right. Couldn't do it.
Couldn't make it work.
So.
But that's a reduction from a million dollars. That's a, you know, a step forward.
Step forward.
Getting off of it. But could be that our E and D balance will run down faster than our ability to use.
That's exactly right. That's, and that's my concern right now. That's exactly right.
We're starting our year, well, $1.4 million is the estimate on E and D for this fiscal year. And if you take out $800, so our balance would be nominally about $600 at the start of the new year.
With the state taking away some of our.
Grants.
Grants, which, I mean, taking away from everybody, not just us.
Right.
Are there other revenue streams that we could chase down?
You're looking at them, everybody that pays their taxes.
So there's no, do we only, can you only get grants from the government? Can you only, I mean, is there others?
So the grant discussion comes up all the time. And I think what you're saying is where else can we find grants, which we can't answer here. But I think what you, what Superintendent Clinchey said is, like, for instance, SPED, right? The SPED organization is always looking for grants and there's a lot of grant monies, but that's also where those grants are getting pulled.
That's right.
So, I mean, it, this is, we can't get into where else.
We can't count on that kind of money.
Well, no, I mean, again, those are the government grants. Are there any other?
Yeah, we could have, like, Coca-Cola Stadium over here.
Okay, so we're not, but that's not where we're at right now. So bring this conversation back to where do you want to fund OPEB? Because I think that's the discussion that's on the table. And Neil, and I'll give my opinion after you say what you need to say.
So this is kind of on, so I'm for the $50,000. Why am I for the $50,000, not $100,000? Because, because I think there needs to be a more complete and thoughtful discussion.
Because, because I think there needs to be a more complete and thoughtful discussion about OPEB, that doesn't just involve...
At what level? At the school committee level?
At a specific committee level. And I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing this out there. And I'm saying, school committee and tax. And I'm talking about tri-town, I'm talking about, this is a nut that we all have to address. And as much as I don't wanna throw it on, you know, any of the towns' backs, it does involve taxes and so forth, and I think what we need to do is have very frank, very candid conversations about, if we do come up with a 500,000 a year or something like that, what does that mean, what does that look like? What are the other challenges that are coming forward, so that everyone is on the same page? And then we can kind of come up with a plan from there. We're looking at, you know, school choice keeps dropping every year, that's gonna still keep happening for the next few years. We're looking at grants dwindling. So, the revenue streams are reducing, but at the same time, we're looking to create savings accounts and put more money here and there. And I mean, it's all fine to talk about this and kind of, but 50 or 100,000, both of them are kicking the can. And I look at this, that if 50,000 has more impact right now, if that means actual curriculum impact or whatnot, I'd rather see the 50,000 go to the schools. But we have to have, part of that discussion, I know I'm on soapbox, but part of that discussion is, what does this district look like if we're doing everything that we need to be by honoring true, the contractual obligations? What does that mean for the student of the district? What does that mean for the taxpayers of the district? And that's the big broad, I mean, this is not, setting this up has been hard enough, just putting together the trust, but we need to figure out, really, how do we crack this nut?
Okay, so, I hear what you're saying, and so, I'm gonna give you my opinion now.
Sure.
And that is that we own this, whether we want to or not, and I have an issue with 43 million as of 12/31/15. That's not Pat, that's just because it's an actuarial estimate. And for me, we know over several years it's dropped, but we're still, even if it drops 2 million, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. We're now paying as we go, and my concern is two things. One, we committed to increasing that amount last year, and we said we were gonna increase the amount. So I don't necessarily subscribe, with all due respect, to the increase by 100,000 every year, I think that is, that is debilitating, and that will impact programming, and I'm not, I can't get there. But I'm also not comfortable with an, with a very substantial liability that we own on behalf of the staff and the teachers, that we need to start to move that number up, and that's why I'm more comfortable with 100,000. If you forced me, I would say, okay, I could do 75 with a lump in my throat, because the budget is what it is this year, it's uncomfortable as it is. But I do not feel like I would be being responsible by saying, okay, we're still gonna, we're gonna fund it at 50,000 again, because this liability is growing, and by the time we get to the point where we can't afford to pay as we go anymore, we are going to feel, we are gonna see staff cuts, we are gonna see program cuts, we are gonna see, you know, unless that high school's well on its way to being renovated, renewed, whatever it is, we are gonna see really big problems. So, because we can't get away from this, just like we can't get away from paying people their salaries unless they get laid off, right? So for me, the 50,000 doesn't fly. Again, I just think we need, we're not gonna solve for, what's our long-term game right now? We need to solve for, what are we gonna put in this budget, and I'm not good with 50, so I'm, that's my position. So, somebody make a motion, and let's get this party started and move on.
So, anything above 50, that the administration's gonna have to fund the other...
That's right.
So that's contingent upon the administration finding?
Or not, or not, not, not taking a hire, or not putting in, you know, and I'm gonna use this example, and I probably shouldn't, because I'm probably gonna get hung for it, but, you know, you know, there were reading rooms, or whatever was happening with the reading program, which I don't wanna touch. Maybe there's equipment that we need, but maybe it comes in the form of an additional add to staff that, I know it's not possible.
No, I think that if it is, I think you start, my opinion would be, if you're gonna cut, you start your cuts with anything that is not, does not provide direct services to students.
But that's not our decision.
I know it's not, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Right, so whatever it is, that's what the administration is going to have to determine, right? We're, we're saying, we're not comfortable, well, if, if this were the way it was, we know that the budget is what it is, we're not gonna, we're not gonna add another 50,000 to, to what the budget, and pass it along to the towns, we're gonna have to manage to whatever it is, and that's what we said, Brooke, I'm sorry, but we're just not comfortable with this, because we're, we haven't even talked about insurance. So, where are you at, guys? Somebody, I'm, I mean, you know, I normally wouldn't make a motion, but if I need to, I will.
So, can we hear a little bit from the administration?
Well, I...
Can you intimitate how challenging it will be to find 25, or 30, or 9, or 50,000?
So, I saw a couple of things here. I think, I think to Kathy's point, I don't see this as a level services budget, because we have reductions in there, so I, I understand, and I'm not holding you to your exact verbiage here, but the truth is, it isn't exactly the same as last year. There are reductions throughout that budget already, so for, for me to go back now to get another 25,000, it'll probably, it will probably be part of a position. Like, that's just the reality. I mean, it doesn't matter how you look at it, there's, we've, we've come to several times, we've, since January, it's, okay, we've, we've taken 2 million dollars off the original ask. We'll do whatever you want us to do, and you know, you all know that. Do I really wanna go back after another 25,000 dollars? Quite frankly, no, I don't. But, but, but it's not that I'm not hearing what you're all saying, and you're right. I mean, this is based on, you know, 2015 to 2017, I think we've already got indications that it's less, but that doesn't matter. To Susan's point, it is a contractual obligation, but if you take a look at how we already budget, we start with contractual obligations right out of the gate, because that's what we're tied to. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna be happy to go back and have to do another, find another 25 or 50,000, or whatever you all decide, but I am respectful, and I will do whatever, whatever you ask, and I, I respect and appreciate that this is a difficult decision.
And we need to get to something tonight, because we've talked about it enough. So, does anybody wanna make a motion to adjust where it is right now, so you'd be to 75 or to 100?
Well, for the purpose of discussion, I move that we increase the line item for OPEB by 25,000 dollars from the most recent draft, so the total expenditure will be 75. And direct the administration to find a way to not increase the total...
Well, within the, the current, right. Is there a second on that? Elise? Okay, so, this doesn't mean that, okay, so what this could mean, and we would expect and hope, and I know you're there, is that if there is surplus in the insurance line item, it could come from there, but given Pat's comment, we're just blue our insurance budget because of the snowstorms, who knows? It doesn't mean there's gonna be a cut, it doesn't mean, but right now, you should gonna have to allocate it from somewhere like that, so that's what it's gonna look like.
So, when you say that there, there have been cuts, there have been cuts made in certain areas, but there are also additions made in other areas, so I think it's like not an overall...
Some of it's a wash, yeah, but not, there's not a lot of that, there's really just, to be honest with you, I mean, when I take a look at that budget, for example, and I know that I said this last time too, at Luther Burbank, I mean, there's a position there that we haven't renewed, but then there's a position there that we got, so there's a bit of a wash there.
Right.
The same thing here at Central Office, there's a, you know, somebody who retired that we're not filling that position, so we're looking at bringing that assistant superintendent position back into the fray. We never took it out, I'm just asking that we fill that position now, with the funds from that other position that was retired. So, you know, the position for the SPED component in, at HALE, I think we've already taken care of that through special education is kind of where that came from. And then that means there was, I think, I wanna say, 0.4 health position, I believe, that we needed, or the ELL, sorry, I think the ELL at HALE, too. That's gonna have to be something new, but we have to be in compliance. So, you know, I don't, I don't really have a choice with that. But, to be honest with you, we didn't come forward with like 10 or 15 asks of new positions.
Right.
So, I, that's why I say I don't really feel that we're even doing level services, and I know you weren't here, but I spoke about the fact that...
I had a watch.
Oh, did you? Okay, so then, when I spoke about the fact that we took a look at the high school class sizes, and said, okay, where can we make some potential reductions there? That is, those are reductions to get the number to where, where it is. So, that's why I say, I don't feel that this is a true level services, because when I think of level services, I think that's exactly what you had in 2018, and that's what you're moving forward with in June 19. And I don't feel at all that we are level services right now. And we did, we made other cuts to other areas, like facilities and that kind of thing. So, I mean, we're just talking, the question was asked about people, so I'm just focusing on people.
Will the students recognize the place where you're working?
Well, we, we tried so hard this year not have a major student impact, I think you'll see staff feel it a little bit, but I don't know that the students will necessarily feel it.
So, there's a motion on the table. Does anybody have any other comments? Neil?
On the funding side of things, I mean, can we look at possible, and I'm throwing that out there, it's totally administration, but, you know, when we have teachers that announce their retirement, and we do a hire, and we've got the difference, and Kathy, is this what you said earlier?
Yes!
Yeah.
Swear I had it, it was a great idea.
And not, and not that I wanna necessarily go down this particular rattle, either, to be honest with you, but we've, we've had this discussion as well too, because you also need to keep in mind, and particularly with the, with our union contract, Unit A, we still have an outlay of additional money that has to happen. So we have to, we always have to keep that in mind, and now, I know that's still on like a six-year cycle, but that's something that we need to think about. We also need to think about when we do any type of, we're not really doing riffing, but if you're laying off somebody, there are always unemployment costs that are, we, those are all things that we need to think about when we, when we think about people leaving and new folks coming onboard. So it's, it's, it gets complex.
This kind of isn't, when somebody does a one-year contract, and they're like, are they, can we pick up that on the phone?
Yes, I believe we do, yeah. You're looking at both Dan, Ray, and Pat saying, yes, you do.
You're the employer, it's like, I don't know, three months or something, I can't remember what it is, but... Okay, so we, again, we have a motion on the table to increase the OPEB funding for the FY19 budget to, from 50,000 to 75,000, without adding to the total expenditure of the budget. All those in favor? Okay, what? You got one? Go ahead.
So, is this saying, like, if we say yes to this, there's no chance of getting to the 100,000?
Well, if this fails, then you can make another motion.
So it's sort of, okay.
So like, if, if everyone says, uh-uh, it's just me and Mark doing it, then it fails, and then you make another motion.
Well, if you could start at 100 and see how it works.
But we already have one motion on the floor.
And you made it.
So, all those in favor? Three of us, four of us, all those opposed? Three, the motion passes. Okay, the next item is the SOI. You're looking like, yeah.
Well...
Well, just, just know that what Mark said, and I guess it's true because you didn't interrupt him, but, I mean, right now, we're at a point where everybody's, maybe not, everyone's getting paid, I mean, it's not like the obligation's not being met, and...
Can we take an extra 10 bucks and buy some watery tickets to Major?
All right, so our next item is the, the Chover Regional High School Statement of Interest. I'll pass this one over to you.
Well, I don't know that we necessarily need lengthy discussion on this tonight, however, I'm not sure where it's gonna go. From my lens right now, the SOI, that has not changed from what you had sent out purposely, except though, I did have a couple of you send in some suggestions that I wanted to be able to incorporate, but I didn't wanna send out a new iteration of that tonight. I wanted us to take a look and say, okay. So some key things that you're looking at, the whole point behind the SOI is priority number five and seven, and that was on the list that you got as well. Number five was replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related cost of a school facility. Number seven was replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. As I worked to pull all of this together, we certainly drew in a number of different components, certainly Rob Freeswick and Pat were heavily involved. We, Joan had to give us a piece or two that we were able to kind of incorporate. You'll notice, if those of you that were involved in the task force, I pulled, I tended to grab pieces of that task force report and kind of reworded it and put it in there as well. And so, basically, when you take a look at the actual SOI, the first little bit is kind of like that overarching view, kind of the view to the process for budget, generalities about maintenance, heating and ventilation, electrical, if you've had any other major upgrades the last couple of years, particularly the last three years is what they're really looking for. And then it kind of goes from there into the priority five and the priority seven. And then the next page, if you took a look, is where it starts to look at the vote, you know, are you ready to take a vote? And so, we went through and put the appropriate language in there, so that we are set to go with that. I would contend tonight that, you know, I, I think that, I'd like to take some of your comments, some of your verbiage suggestions, and kind of incorporate them, I know Lynn suggested, can you group a couple of these things together now, and, you know, so I think that, I think I can go through and do that, but the actual bulk of the substance, the content, won't change. That's there, that's in play now. So, unless you've got something other huge changes that you'd like to suggest, that's what I suggest we put forward, and we'll see where it lands. I've been in touch with MSBA throughout the process, their whole thing was to really focus on issues, not solutions, or any, suggesting any type of resolution at all for whatever it was that you're up against, they said, we're just really looking for the bullets of what the key issues are. The other thing I wanna remind you is that MSBA, every five years, goes through every building across Commonwealth, and they just did ours again last year. And so they go through every single building, and they have a data bank, so I mean, what we're putting forward is kind of that broad overarching view, they've got real specifics of their data bank on every one of our buildings, including our high school. So, ours is just kind of putting forward and saying, this is what we see as the key issues, and so that's, that's what I put forward in the SOI. So that's kind of where we're sitting at with it tonight, so I'm certainly open to any comments, suggestions.
Do you have a copy of what the status?
I think you can find it online, actually, I don't know whether, I can go and try to find the link and send it to you, because I think that they just posted the 2017, maybe a month or two ago.
Okay, on the SOI, Lynn has been providing a lot of feedbacks to Superintendent Clinchy. Does anybody else have feedback on it? And Lynn, do you feel, do you feel like, because honestly, I think for my purposes, I think Lynn is the right person to be doing this for us, given her, her chosen career, her experience, and her knowledge, and the fact that she already built a school for the district, was on that committee. Do you, do you, have you reviewed the full document? How much more do you have to do? Because we're starting to get close now, but, tell me.
There's enough of you. Are you ready?
On the science, I read about three quarters, but only, you know, like, very small.
So he told you didn't read three quarters? Yeah, okay.
But on the science labs though, and I know that you talked about the leaking. I mean, the, like, air leaking is not really it. I mean, it could be like 30 degrees if you're on that side of the room. I mean, that's substantial. And just that leaking, I don't know if they noted it in their last inspection, but that's huge to me. And the other aspect, that they actually have to leave the door open in various classes in order for the toxic fumes to vent out of the room properly. I think maybe that wants to be noted.
Again, please just offer your suggestions and I can incorporate whatever else you want me to incorporate in there. Okay. The, geez. And I, and I've heard, you know, staff say they have to wear their coats and mittens in a classroom, like, in the winter, which is like outrageous. So let's move this ball forward. And, you know, you and Lynn, and everyone should be reading this document, but you and Lynn really do have the most knowledge. And I really would have asked that the two of you would go through it, get your comments to Superintendent Clenchey by... I know you're going to kill me because he's trying to move. How much time do you? I need to get this in, like, I mean, I really need the vote to, like, know later the next meeting. I mean, I have to have the vote to move it forward. So can you guys get her, Superintendent Clenchey, final comments, suggestions? Don't reinvent the wheel on it by Monday morning?
Yeah, that's it, that's fine.
And then you're going to just have to power through it for the next meeting? And it's got to be, so like, that would give you a week and a half to come back with a pristine document for us. But we would need, but see then, the tough thing is, we need that in the packet the Monday before the meeting, because there's no way we can read 20 pages in two hours before a meeting. So you'd have to get it in by Monday morning. No, that, I don't, I don't mind that, I'm fine with that. It's just, I just know that I'm starting, I'm starting to feel the pressure of getting that thing in on time. I can certainly understand that.
What is the time of closure?
April 6. So Lynn and Neil, if you could, but Lynn, really, can you finish your review and get your comments? And I realize I've taken one for the team, but it's your expertise. And Neil, if you could just do another cursory review. All right, thank you. We're moving on then. So we'll get, we'll get that to you by, when I say Monday morning? Okay, we're moving on. And now we're, I know you're all going to fire me after this. The FY19 budget discussion and vote. So here's my suggestion on how we do this. Are there areas in the budget that you want to have discussion on? Anybody? I've got one, but Neil, what do you got?
I'm still technology.
Okay.
I'm still there on the meshing between curriculum, the ask, the infrastructure and the curriculum. And I'd just love to see some sort of guarantees that we're going to be able to have some form that's, that's bringing it all together. I mean, we've had some conversations for sure on all this, and I just want to, I want to see this, I'm a huge believer in it. I want to see it succeed. And that means that, you know, we need to have buy-in from teachers, we need to, and plan to get there.
And I think to your point, one of the things that the Personnel Subcommittee has been working on is a, there's a job description. So there's a job description for the Assistant Superintendent role. That role is focused on curriculum and digital learning. And I think even in that proposed job description, the IT manager reports up into, into that functional area. So that person is exactly what we've been talking about for how many years is that role? It's totally devoted and dedicated because it's curriculum, that's what the district is supposed to be doing, and the digital component, which is a huge enabler and a cost driver. And it takes all of that together, and then it pulls in those responsible areas for oversight of those areas. So my thought, so I'm with you on that, I'm kind of...
Somebody owns it? Is that, that's my question.
Yes.
Are you saying somebody owns block stock in that?
Yes.
Okay, because that's, that's...
Yes. So, so that's, now, we don't have the final final, and the Subcommittee's got to, um, did we vote on that?
No, we were going to wait, we had to wait and see if the budget passed.
Okay, so Neil, and the rest of you. So I would say, you know, this item, and if there's any other items, we could pass the budget, but it's contingent on the School Committee approving that job description as to whether or not that position would get filled. So it's not like we're going to approve the budget, it's done, moving on. We still have to approve that job description because it's a substantial change. And we have to approve the job description and the ad for the Assistant Principal at Luther Burbank. So we could still approve the budget contingent upon those job descriptions being approved. In addition to that, the Assistant Superintendent, and I had language on this. The Assistant Superintendent role is, it's got to come, the individual comes before the School Committee. What do you got there?
These were the changes that you made the other night.
Oh, okay, so we probably want to put these on, we don't want to do this now because they haven't seen it.
But just to let you know, if you...
They're ready to go. So I think, what was I, where was I going with this? I think my point is that we will be, whoever the individual is that's identified for the Assistant Superintendent role, not the principal role, because that's not our job, that's the administration's job, will come before the School Committee and we do vote. Okay?
So I have, this may seem like a stupid question, but I am curious about how this Assistant Superintendent differs from the coordinators of, like, the STEM, the coordinator for digital learning, how are those?
We're looking at revamping all of that.
Is that part of what Personnel is working on? Because, because I'm really reluctant, like, I feel like out of an eagerness to...
Just say it.
Everybody has the best intentions, and I know that there's like an end goal in mind. But I kind of feel like what has happened a couple of times is, and like the Vice, the Vice Principal at the high school is one example of it, is we know that there's a problem. We haven't really sort of dealt with how we're going to address it, but we suspect you might need more manpower, women to, to help with that. Do you know what I mean? So I, I, I'm just reluctant to, to, to support adding that. And I know it might not be an add because other positions aren't being filled, so...
Right.
But it isn't, it's setting, I mean, the likelihood of it being taken away is very, very slim. So how do, how do the existing people within teaching and learning fit into the whole scheme when you add that Assistant Superintendent?
So that's still, that's a great question, because the truth is, we are still having ongoing discussions with that.
So I'm really, I don't, I don't, I can't support adding that administrative position until we figure out exactly what the need is. Like, saying yes, we need it, and then writing a, writing a job description, to me...
Well, the job description's ready to go, we just haven't adopted, we haven't recommend, I mean, we, we need to vote on it to recommend to the School Committee.
But I, but I hear what she's saying, because what she's saying is, have we fully defined what the issue is? Now, are we actually addressing it? Or are we just saying there's a problem throwing the person out?
It's just, it's, I'm noticing kind of like a little bit of a pattern, and I know that it's like with the best of intentions. But, you know, when we raised the preschool rates, that was sort of a tough pill to swallow, but there were assurances made that there would be an evaluation of programming, and there was, right? But there was an increase in cost to the parents in the district, and then that work was done afterwards. Even something like the book rooms. So the principals, I mean, I know that that's, that's something that will, I mean, how could it not benefit kids to have more books? But some of the principals were talking about how they're looking at, at what they have now, and that's an ongoing process, and that it, you know, it's a time-consuming process. And so, like, you know, adding in the funding for additional books when you haven't yet inventoryed...
Yeah, no, that's totally very different.
Well, but I'm saying, like, that's just like one, and then, and then like with the Vice Principal position to deal with weaknesses, or not, I maybe weakness isn't the, isn't the right word, but some inefficiencies in the evaluation process at the high school level. You know, I just feel like, until those things are clearly defined, adding more staffing to, rather than looking at the existing staffing and how we can... It just, it just seems like with, with...
You are making sense.
With a, with a, you know, the digital learning coordinator, with an ELA coordinator, the coordinator for the enrichment, it just seems like there's a lot of people who, who are working very hard, but maybe, maybe they're at, maybe, um...
So what I'm hearing is that, that, so this is, this, so we do need someone to, to move the curriculum in the district forward. Because by all admissions, it's kind of like, we've got some pretty stinking amazing staff who have taken it upon themselves to do that, right? But in, but one second, in a coordinated, consistent way, I think that this position, and I hear what you're saying, I think what's going to happen is there's, there's more going on that they're working through right now that we're not privy to.
Right.
Not, not only, we're, the public's not privy to it, but we're not even privy to it, nor should we be, because it may involve some decisions that have to be...
Yes, and that's part of the decisions that have happened already.
But, but for the reasons that Neil brings up, I am, I, you know, I really vacillate on this thing because I'm back and forth with it. But frankly, we need the curriculum piece, we need the digital piece, and this is going to be totally focused. And so that individual, whoever they are, their goals, their evaluation, everything has got to tie back to that job description and be proof positive that it's working. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to apologize to Principal Friend right now for what I'm about to say. I'm more questioning, do we need one FTE as an Assistant Principal in the Luther Burbank School? I understand that there's a population that needs to be addressed, and I know that there's some evaluation. So, and I don't know enough about it, and I could be completely wrong, but that's one of my questions, is, do we need the full, the one FTE? I'm not even looking at her right now.
I feel like, I feel like, it's not just because of Lancaster's role, I feel like there's been a stronger case built for adding that position. I feel like there's been more of a cautious approach in, in asking for that. And while cautious is, I don't mean to suggest that, that no one's very cautious. I just, is there a chance that somebody within teaching and learning will, like, will there be a restructuring that might involve, I don't know, you probably can't answer.
Yeah. I know where you're, I know where you're heading. To be honest with you, I don't...
And I know it's not in the grand scheme, it's not that much money. I mean, it's not, but it's just, it's sort of like, every year, these little things keep getting added, and I wonder like, you know, when it becomes...
So I don't see it through that lens at all, and I hear what you're saying, I don't see it through that lens at all. If anything, I come from a very different lens. I look at this and say, there's some shifting of sands that have needed to have happened here. We knew at the high school that we had some other issues that we needed to take a look at. It wasn't just about evaluations, all of that was a piece of it. It wasn't just about curriculum, but that was a piece of it. There were some other cultural components and everything else that we were not going to bring to this table, that we knew that we needed to look at. So, so you won't hear me talk about that, you'll hear me focus on the edival and curriculum, but that's not all, right? So, so to that end, I don't begrudge that position at all. When I look at the shifting of sands, I do look and think that, I think that we were able, like, Lynn had asked a question tonight, will the kids feel some of these reductions? I don't think that they're going to, but I do think that you're going to see the days of the classes of six and seven kids has to, that has to dissipate. And so where's that shifting? Where's that shifting coming in? Last year, we added some, a guidance counselor position at the high school. That was something we needed to have. We might not have needed some of the smaller classes, but we definitely needed that particular position. When I look to the Assistant Principal at Luther Burbank, I'm willing to go down that road because I think you're right, I think we've made a good, solid case for that. I'm not, I'm not even questioning that, I really believe with all my heart that needs to happen. Otherwise, and it's, it's not even about an individual principal at Luther Burbank, and I don't think you can ever look at your staffing, you should never look at it with who's in play right now. I think that the, there's always going to be that need, or I, and again, this has got nothing to do with Principal Friend, but you have the potential to burn your, your principals out in that building. And so you kind of have to look back and say, wait a minute, we need to, we need to shift the sand here. And, you know, when, when the other position, when we took a look at that and said, we don't really need this position over here, but boy, we really need this position here. To me, it was a no-brainer. So I don't even question that position. Same thing here right now. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say this again, for two years, we did not backfill that Assistant Superintendent position. It didn't fall off the books, and the expectation was that I would fill it all in, which I think, I think I've done an okay job of, but it's a big position. But I've said all along, my concern was that curricular piece, because the other stuff that I take care of, that I have to take care of to keep things running smoothly. When the opportunity opened this year to shift the sands in teaching and learning, we capitalized on it. So am I prepared to come forward tonight and say, this is what I think it's going to look like? No, I'm not. Do I have a vision of what it's going to look like? Yes, I do, but I'm not prepared tonight to, to go down that road. So I just see it as a shifting of sand of where the needs are for the district or the schools, and that's really how we've looked at managing the district in this budget. Okay. No. Lord, help me, please.
I think my perspective is, and again, I hate to be the person that says, when I was Phil and Blake, but...
Well, then don't say it, just say what you need to say.
But what I'm thinking about is just watching the way this, this district was functioning three years ago, and how there were people in positions that were not doing what people in those positions should be doing. And a lot of money was spent, and I'll say it, a lot of money was wasted, a lot of money was misspent. A lot of money went to providing perks for adults and was taken away from direct services to kids. And in the last two, two and a half years, I've seen that change. And I can see the need, and, and the, is it the NESTA, not NESTA, what's the?
NIAS.
NIAS report pointed out what the issues were at the high school and what needed to be done. And it was easy for me to support that position because I saw it as a dedicated position and a need. A need that's existed for many years. The same with the, what's going on and the need in Lancaster. That's a unique situation. You know, you can have all the best intentions and schedule and everything, and one kid exercises poor judgment. And depending on how poor the judgment is, it's just a time sink, and you lose that, and that's where the help is needed, because there's some extraordinary circumstances that Lancaster has to work with because of the student population. And then the Assistant Principal, the Assistant Superintendent. I mean, we've been looking at that for three years, and this role. We had a job description looking at it last year. And again, there are some coordination needs. It's the big criticism of high school curriculum, is that there are silos and people don't work together. Well, you can say the same thing about what happens to curriculum, because you don't have that leadership to make the connections. That each school has their own curriculum, and this is what, you know, it should be that there's a district curriculum and district leadership, not just, well, this is what they do at Florence Sawyer or at the Hale Middle School.
I guess I thought that's what was happening in teaching and learning already with those curriculum board leaders.
Because they didn't have the leadership. It's left to, under the former administration, it was left to the superintendent. Now, this superintendent, without a, an assistant, you know, it's, it's a law. And then the, the, the last comment I want to make is about the book rooms, because that really is creating an economy of scale. Because when you have level literacy at the elementary level...
Yeah.
No, but, but it means that instead of having everybody read the same book, I mean, we all read, you know, whatever it was, Ned and Tom and Dick and Jane.
I'm not opposed to it at all.
I know, but I just think there is, it, 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 it's the point that we have to do a better job in building understanding about what it is, because what happens is, each teacher has their own library, and you're not going to get my books, and I, Lynn's not in here. So you create a book room, and you do that, and it's.
It was just that during the budget here, I mean, the budget workshop.
Yeah.
You know, there were, am I wrong, or didn't some principals say that they, they were still in the process of going through the existing book rooms or the existing?
Some of them don't have the book rooms.
Shared libraries. It sounded like most of the elementary had a shared library in some sense.
I think that's what two of them were creating.
And I'm just using as one, as one example of how if maybe a few more months were given to iron out exactly what was needed, I'm not, I'm not saying that that money won't be spent wisely, and that it's not, I mean, believe me, I'm an English teacher, I know, I know exactly what it's going to be.
But can I just speak to that for a minute?
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's all right. Just, I'm sorry.
I just, I would hate for it to seem like I was against.
No, 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 but I think this.
It's going to be the headline.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Susan Hays' books.
Ooh, you're going to get mail.
I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on, on the, a couple of points on those, and then, and then I'll be quiet about this. The addition of the books, it's really to support the ongoing literacy initiative that our teachers are so deeply, deeply involved in right now. So I don't want there to ever be a thought out there that, oh, we're just bringing extra. These are very specific, and so that, that's the first piece. The other piece is when you take a look, going back to that workshop that you were talking about at the, on January 20th, if you take a look at the principals' lines, like go back through those, and maybe you've already done this, Susan, and you're going to see that those principals cut in other areas so that they could have the money exactly where that is. So I mean, that, that should send the message of how important those principals, those elementary principals.
And had they not been super transparent about their process, I probably wouldn't have questioned it at all, that they could say that, you know, and, and maybe it's done that, maybe that work is done now, maybe it will be done by the time they, you know, so, but that was just one example of, you know, that in addition to the preschool, you know, the, the revamping of that, it sounds like now the revamping of teaching and learning, it's all, they're all good, I mean, obviously necessary and good faith efforts, it's just, I wonder about the timing, and I know obviously you pass the budget once a year, so things pop up, and I, I just, it just seems to be, you know, when, when, when Jen changed her mind on the vote, that, I keep going back to that meeting where, you know, the, the budget hadn't passed last year, and then we revoted, and she, you know, and it did pass, and, and she asked for, and it was agreed that it was, it was a, you know, a legitimate request, that at the end of the year, if there were extra funds, that there be a serious conversation about maybe returning some of those to the towns, and I just feel like there's, there's these best intentions, but missing pieces that keep kind of, you know, it just, yeah, I just.
I think your point about missing pieces is not, not a bad point though, because that, that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to plug all the, the missing pieces that we're finding, as, as we uncover some of the, the onion layers, and I don't know, remember who said tonight about the silos, but that's another piece that we came upon, and we said, I think it was Kathy, that was another piece that we came upon, we said, wait a minute, we see silos here, we, we need to strip those silos and take a, a fresher look at it. So to be honest with you, the, the budget allows us the opportunity to go back and have a fresh look at things and re-orchestrate, so.
And I apologize if we're taking so much time, I just, I haven't been here.
No, it's nice to hear your voice.
What she's saying is, and this isn't about the books at all, you know, although you still.
No, I understand that. I'm not getting.
But, I mean, actually, I mean, I'd like to make a request that next year, when they come forward, that there's a little more definitive emphasis about what the ask is. I mean, I, I love the fact that they're trying to do something a little bit different, and they're trying to, you know, you know, streamline between all three of them and have kind of the same stuff, but she has a point, a lot of stuff that comes up, it's not, it's got holes up, it's, it's, it's iffy, it's, it's, well, we'd like to do this, but we're still working on this, this, and this, and if you want more examples, we can use security.
No, but even the book room is like, what was it, $10,000?
Yeah.
So like, but.
Well, that wasn't the point though.
But, but, no, but I know what you're saying, it's like we put the $10,000 plug number there, we don't necessarily know what it is, whether it's more or whether it's less, and I think that's kind of along the lines of what you're saying.
Yeah, add a little more definitive.
But, but they may not know that, I mean, in order to vet stuff, everything like that to the penny is.
It isn't even just that, it's also, I mean, we've got $30,000 off, you know, last year's budget to, you know, actually oversee securities so we can actually have a plan of what's existing. Is that going to happen? You know, I mean, it, but we put money in for something that we might do, you know, we put money in for, because my big thing is, we have no plans, you know, this, you know, you talk about the five-year plan, you talk about, but there's no real assessment about what's existing, so that we can go back and actually say, okay, let's build upon what we have. What do we have, what can we do with it, what works, what doesn't, and have a thoughtful plan to move forward. We can't do that because we don't have the plan.
Okay, so, all right, so hold on, and Neil's going to go, Neil's, Neil's, okay, so, but Lynn, let's address this for a second. So we have someone who's coming in with $30,000 to look at our schools and do an assessment on security. There will be an assessment. From the assessment, I would assume a plan will be created.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
So now, I think your big nut is on technology and IT, and I understand that, and I will contend that we have talked for a long time about the fact that we do not feel, present administration, past administration excluded, included, or whatever, we do not feel that we have a viable digital learning plan. Period. No excuses. That's the problem. This position, I really, because when we looked at the job description, we went back several times and said, it's still not close enough, it's still not close enough, it can't be a catch-all position, because if it's a catch-all position, I can't support it. But the position itself is on K-12 curriculum, the position itself is on technology, including the people, digital learning, pulling that into it, including the people that are responsible for delivering the technology, so finally, we're going to have some oversight. To me, that person is building the plan.
Okay, that's what, what I wanted to talk about initially, about IT. IT is a budget driver, hugely a budget driver.
And it will always be.
And it will, but there are ways, if you, if you manage it correctly, there are ways that we can have efficiencies. You know, right now, we're just supporting everything.
Okay, but are we? Okay, so what, what is the, and I, and I love you, and you know that, but what, no, I do, what is your point? I need to know what your point is, because if your point is helping the administration find ways to do that, that may not be the right discussion, so what?
No, actually, I, because there is no plan, all right, and so what we're doing is, and I'm going to go to the one-to-one, I mean, that one-to-one, we were supposed to have a, a report open, how that's operating, how it gets managed, and where the warranties are, and how the insurance is worked, and you know, and all that stuff, because those are money, I mean, that's huge, and it's going to grow every single year, and we are going to become an IT company, and I don't want to do that personally.
Actually, I think she's right about that, we need to know.
We, we have, this thing's just going to grow.
But, but for tonight.
It's an unsustainable thing right now, and so you, I mean, I, I just have a hard time supporting IT without a plan.
So what do you want to do about that tonight?
I don't know what you can do, I mean, right now, we keep kicking that can down the road, and I don't, is, is, is there a plan besides getting an assistant superintendent?
Well, Neil, he's going to have.
That's the plan, right?
That is the plan.
Get the assistant superintendent who's going to.
And they're charged.
They're going to build what you're saying isn't there, and I agree that there's a lot of gaps, and there's a lot of issues, and we've been building these bridges to nowhere in, in capital for a long time. And, right, initiative fatigue, all those, right, familiar terms.
Yes.
Every bird for, for years. And, you know, I support the administration in, in taking the moves, and I know just some of the things in such a short period of time has been done. And I take in good faith that you know what you're doing, which is why we put you there in that seat. And when you're changing the culture, when you're changing just the hierarchy and the way that things are, you have to bring people in, and then things have to change. You can't get rid of them, have a vacuum, and then have nothing to fill it, right? And they come back a year later. So there is this, this whole evolution that needs to happen in any organization when you're, when you're conducting change. Now, add in unions, contract negotiations, and everything else that comes with this, and, and the NIAS report, and the cultural things, and, I mean, it is a huge nut that needs to be cracked. So, you know, things like, do we need to have people come in and, and create really thorough evaluations? Yeah, because they weren't being done before, you know, to the, to the extent or the level that we needed to have them done. They weren't making, if I'm not mistaken, state requirements for all the evaluations throughout the entire district. So by having the administration come in and put people in place that actually creates the accountability for what we're paying taxes for, what the kids are going to school for, that's key. And so I get the idea that there's going to be some, what I do want to see though, myself, and I think we should all want to see, is the, the proof in the pudding, right? You can't talk about personnel things, and I get that, so when you come in, that's really a handicap for you, because you can't, okay, this one's in, but now I can't talk about anything I'm doing, all right? And I get that, but we should see at some point the end result. And if we don't see the end result, to Susan's point, in, at some point in time, then we need to be at least directed to, here's where the result's going to be, here's where the expectation is, so then we can circle back around. And it doesn't ring of the initiative fatigue that we've had in the past for these human bridges to nowhere, you know? I mean, and I think that's really the key, like, what have you done this, a recap at the end of the year, what have I done as far as changing the world that we live in? That's great, you know? But I think it's important that we do know that, because then it does create the value, the perceived value of what you're doing and the justification on that.
So I noticed there's no budgetary numbers attached to this conversation.
It's weird you put it, I mean, I don't.
What do you mean? The, the, the numbers are in the budget.
Right, I mean, it's not, perhaps better said, there's no proposal surrounding this.
Oh, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm not going to tell the administration, you need to cut that position so we can get some substandard function, no, I don't want that. Is that what you're talking about?
No, perhaps one of better things, maybe we're done with this discussion, we can put it on the budget.
Oh, yes, however. However, what?
I, because this has been kicked down so far, I mean, seriously, I am so reluctant to give IT anything, I mean, I'm just, no increases.
Lynn, how, how realistic, I get it, you want assurances, and you know what?
I want something.
And you know what? I think that, I mean, and I don't want to be on the defense, offense, anything like that, I don't want that, I just want to, you and I have this conversation. I completely understand where you're at, I think everybody else in this room completely understands where you're at. I think that the reality is, we cannot not fund IT.
No, I get that too.
Unfortunately. My thought is, this position that's going in, I mean, I have a really big, high hope because, like, Brooke and I have talked about it, like, I can't fund any more people, and, and I think she's moving and shifting and changing, but there's another area in the budget that I want to bring up. So if we want to.
Okay.
Say your last things about this.
So what can we do so that next year, when we're talking about this, we can say, it didn't work? I'm sorry.
It worked.
It worked would be wonderful. Worked would be wonderful, but it has been, it, we've been carrying this for a long, long time.
So I would think that if we were able to find somebody to start in the summer, that by this time next year, I would expect us to have a digital plan. I mean, a real one, not like a funny kind of slap-it-together one.
Well, even before that, you hire someone, the expectations are made clear, you set goals, you copy benchmarks, and you evaluate against that, and that's your report. We don't just say, hey, welcome aboard, and then in, whenever it is, April, say, so how's it going? No. And we have this, and, and, because we have been on that tech committee, you mean, one of the appetitive forces, where's the accountability? I remember in, in the district improvement plan, there were all of these lofty technology goals, but there was no way to measure them. There was no accountability, they sounded great, but it comes down to very basically, you say, these are our concerns, you make goals, and then you check in and see how it's going.
Our job is to hold, different than Clenchey.
Yes.
Completely responsible for this, so I don't want us to get into engineering.
No, it's fine.
But I, but I think it's our responsibility to put on this.
Right.
Check-ins.
Yep.
So, no, and I'm the only one that's keeping this calendar, and y'all have input on it, so if you don't want to provide input, you're going to end up with what I'm coming up with, so like, let's get a little more, let me know.
Add it to next year's goals too, for the superintendent, right, as, as, with benchmarks on there.
Right. See, you didn't know what you were getting into, did you? Okay, so I have another area I want to touch base on, and I, and it came up at the last, the last meeting, and, and I, and I've thought about it a lot, and so that is another obligation of ours, which is insurance, health insurance, which everybody knows is skyrocketing, you know, it's becoming a budget buster, I just read another paper today, because I have to do it for my job job, my real job that I get paid for, about the percent increase of health insurance for FY19 across the country, and it's really unfortunately nauseatingly scary. I do understand that the administration is looking at some potential levers for efficiencies with our current healthcare providers. I do understand that there is an insurance advisory committee, and I understand the function of that, we're going to talk more later on, but I also want us to be thinking about a, a couple of things. So in the latest federal, federally passed healthcare program, there was a provision from the Affordable Care Act that is, that's, that's remained in there, and it's called, it's 2020, 2022.
2022.
And it's called Cadillac Tax. So what is that? So the Cadillac Tax is by 2022, if the premiums, both employer and employee, so the total premium exceeds a certain threshold for individuals, there's a number, and a certain threshold for families, there's a number, then the difference from that threshold and what the full premium cost is, you take the difference, times 40%, that's an excise tax, that's a penalty, so what we will be paying is, and everyone else, and it's like over 90% of the municipalities and the public entities in this country are going to be dealing with it, so if you want any more impetus to, to start looking at something, that's it. I asked Pat to share with me our monthly premiums, so I could just do some back-of-the-napkin numbers, so I appreciate the work that you're doing and that you're starting with committee, and I truly appreciate reevaluating this, because in today's dollars, if, we've got three, three options, we've got an HMO and then, like, looks like two PPOs, right?
Yeah, POS and a PPO.
Okay, so the HMO is fine, so in today's dollars, if we looked at what that Cadillac Tax is, we're fine. The other two, if you look at one employee that puts their family on one of those two other programs, so we would pay whatever the, the employer portion that we're responsible for, and then on top of it, it's either a 1,500 or to 1,500 or $2,100 excise tax for one employee, and that's for the family plan. So what I'm saying is that I'm appreciative of the fact that the administration's already looking at this, that they are engaging the, the other folks on the committee, but we, whether or not the government adjusts that threshold up, or whether or not they get rid of it, which I don't know how they would, because think about the windfall, we have big, another big scary thing coming at us, right? So now we're paying salaries, and we're paying OPE, and we're paying exorbitant health insurance, and we're paying, and you want to talk about, you know, removing services? So my point is, I think that this committee has been extraordinarily responsible in looking at not just what we're dealing with this year, but what's coming over the next several years. I think the administration has worked with us on it, I think sometimes we have to drag each other kicking and screaming, screaming to the trough, but I think we, this is, this budget season, I think is like the beginning of. but I think we, this is, this budget season, I think, is like the beginning of some really tough conversations, and we have to keep moving forward. And the health insurance thing is, you know, my hope is that this year, the administration is able to work closely with that group, that committee, and look at some possible alternatives, because in three and a half years, I'm not in favor of paying a penalty on top of insurance. What's up?
Um, just in line with the topics that have come up, typically, you know, when we pass the budget, we leave aside, we leave, and then forget about it until next year. I, it would, maybe we should start as we can, I mean, we've identified a number of things, technology, insurance. I can't remember if it was at this committee or a subcommittee, we talked about looking at kids who choice out, and how much money leaves this district. So I'd like us to consider starting to look at those things, because they seem to come up when we're in the midst of developing the budget. So I, I think we could get ahead of the curve if we, you know, had our questions about these things, and where we needed to get some information to, to work towards solutions. You know, also, and I think to Susan and Lynn's point, in terms of gearing up toward when the administration comes in to present their budgets, what do we need to understand? What do folks need to understand to understand what's in the budget? Because they come in, here are our asks, it goes quickly, but if there is, if there is a, you know, like background, like understanding about what the bookrooms mean, and, you know, what.
So things like, I don't wanna get into too much detail.
But wait, I'm gonna tell you, I think, I'm confused, I'm confused by that, because once we have the Saturday morning, big, long, exhausting morning, we brought every single one of those functional areas, including every single one of the principals, I'm pointing this way, 'cause I don't wanna point at you, 'cause that's where, but every single one of them, back to a school committee to ask questions. If there was a question about what was the reading room, why wasn't it asked, and why wasn't it shuttled over to the superintendent? I respect what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but I think this is not a shy group of people. If you got a question, we gotta send it in.
No, I get that, but I guess when I'm, I'm, like, reflecting on the process.
I, I totally knew what they were all up to. Yeah, and you're just using that as.
Oh, oh.
No, 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 just as for other things. But I think I'm trying, maybe this isn't the.
Neither did Joltean, he has no idea what a reading room is.
But the, I guess, our need, perhaps, to have a forum ourselves, to reflect upon, for us, what went well with the process, and what we need moving forward with the process.
And so is that not, you know, I totally agree, I think that's what we do in our goal-setting session, typically, before we break.
Right, but we, other stuff is on the thing then, and we never get, we didn't do it last year, are we gonna check up?
We, we.
We talked about the budget process?
We, yeah, we, actually, we did do quite a lot of, we did a lot of reflection on the budget process. All right, so Neil, go ahead.
It happened, if you were, if you were not present, a couple budget warrant meetings where we did talk, and I forget what the occasion was, but there was some discussion that is at the subcommittee.
I don't wanna appear contrary to Kathy.
However.
But.
That's what we do in budget warrant. I mean, that's, that's really.
I'm talking about the committee as a whole.
No, as a whole, no, yeah, that's.
Does it get to here?
Yeah.
I mean, you guys, I just pass out, you guys go, and I'm like.
I appreciate you looking out for those of us who are not on the budget.
Good job.
There could be an opening coming up.
Any more questions on the budget?
Time-wise. All right, so what you were talking about with, with that, so insurance, when would insurance, timely-wise?
Well, it's a bigger discussion, so, it's a bigger discussion, because the insurance advisory committee, is that what it is?
Okay.
We can't dictate to them, but there are some other, there are some other options for, I, I'm looking into it just to understand what, what it is. We can't dictate to them.
But timely, but they need to report out to us, don't they?
No, that comes through the administration. We'll, we'll talk about it in personnel.
Okay, another time, and then.
What we can do is, we can say, can we please find out what other, how are premiums compared to other providers? But we can't force anyone to do anything, so.
And I think that there's gonna be an appetite there to look into it deeper, anyway.
Well, especially after you hear about this Cadillac Tax, yeah, 'cause that means big time cuts.
I'm not supporting.
I know, I know you are, but I'm like flipping out about it.
So what about the, timely-wise, let's talk about the choice-out kids.
Well, we're not gonna answer that now, we're talking, I've got it on here.
I'm just, you do have it, okay.
Okay, it's on here, we'll talk about when we're gonna do that. Right now, we need to look at the budget, and what other areas of the budget are there concerns with, and if not, somebody make a motion. Neil.
I'll make a motion that accepts the FY19 budget as presented.
Yeah, you have to save about 54 million, or another figure, what, 2,000.
Sounds like Kathy's got it.
Yeah, but you make a motion, you go.
Go ahead, do it.
No, no, Neil, you go.
And this is contingent on those two positions being, the positions being.
Right, so it goes up.
No.
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 I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the FY19 requested budget of 54 million, 114,104 dollars, with the contingency of the assistant superintendent position being approved by the school committee. And the assistant principal.
Job description.
Job description, thank you, being approved by the school committee for the assistant superintendent, and the assistant principal at Luther Burbank Middle School.
Second.
You did it already, you did a good job.
Done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I don't need to do roll call on this, I just need to do.
We need to first.
Yeah. What's that? I probably should have asked this before. Will this mean, this will most likely mean that, like, we still have to go into the no buy, or yeah?
We don't have any information to that. We've sought it, and have been successful.
In a way that you need to believe in.
But you know what? We can't, I can't, we can't, I, I, no, I know, okay. And I just wondered, I guess it was more for Kathy, right?
Yeah, no, the information about levy limit, any of that stuff, has not been forthcoming.
And so the contingency, that means that it can not approve when that budget was down?
What?
So we have just confused the contingency.
What contingency?
About which positions?
No, it's just that we're, we're approving the job descriptions. Those positions don't get filled until we approve the job descriptions.
Until we're satisfied that they're gonna do what we hope they would do, right?
So the job description gets where they are, based on what happened in personnel, we go back over them in personnel, assuming they're where they need to be, we make the recommendation to the school committee, these are the two job descriptions, and then the school committee does what it's gonna do, approves them, and then the positions can be filled, but they can't be filled until the school committee approves the job descriptions. That's all that back.
But doesn't affect the budget at all?
No, the budget money is there, and it's not, there's no more money interim. I'm sorry, it's been a long several months.
Just, I mean, just.
Laura, are you with me? Okay. Any other comment? I know, right? I feel like I've been drinking, and I didn't. I swear that I have. Anybody else? Anything? No.
Can I reread that?
Please. I don't know if I really want to.
I've got it right in front of me.
You've got it right in front of you, okay, just make sure.
Sir, approve the FY19 budget for the amount of 54 million, 114,104 dollars, with the contingency of the approval of the job descriptions for the assistant superintendent and the assistant principal at Luther Burbank Middle School.
And this hasn't changed from February 28?
No, that amount is correct.
That amount is correct.
That's what was in.
That's exactly.
It was 3.91.
3.91.
3.91.
All right. Okay, so, I just want you to know, based on the email I sent a couple weeks ago, in order for the budget to pass, and everyone owns their vote, and no one, there's no shame in whatever you decide to do, that you need to do for your town, okay? But in order for this budget to pass, we need two-thirds of the seats, so not, even with Steve not here, we need six yeses. If we don't get the yeses, we go back at it again, all right? All those in favor? All those opposed? The budget passes unanimously. Susan is gonna have a heart attack.
No, I'm just, I'm actually hoping that a vote goes out for no ride, and let the citizens decide, 'cause I hate spending the people's money.
I hear ya. Okay, so.
Oh, it just passed the budget.
We just, okay, no, 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 I can't do that, 'cause I'm like, I'm overwhelmed by the money we're talking about here. Thank you, and thank you, Pat, and your staff, and every single principal in this district, and everyone else that owns a functional area. This was a grueling experience this year, and it's probably not gonna get much easier as we go, things get tighter and tighter. But the school committee sincerely appreciate working with you on this budget warrant. You did some amazing work this year. Thank you all so very much, and I know it's gonna be, it's overwhelming. We are moving into our subcommittee reports. Budget warrant, Neil, is there anything to share?
We have some things that'll be coming up for the next meeting. We did, we did vote on the reports and the structure, with the contents.
Oh, good, oh, good.
So we have a, we have a list coming to you for, I didn't want to get it to you for this one, because there's a lot going on, but for next one, we'll be able to vote on it, and discuss and vote on it as a school.
Actually, that would be great. Perfect. And if you need to prioritize your time, and we could even kick that into the first April one, huh, Alita? April 11, I think?
Yeah, that would be great.
I just worry about you leaving before it's done.
Yep, that would be great.
So, sorry.
Yeah, that's, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, we're scheduled, just depends on whether my colleagues will show up or not, I guess.
We'll talk about it Tuesday.
We will be discussing, well, stabilization fund was one of them, so we'll take that off the list, and then we have the OPEP discussion, obviously, and the other stuff.
Great, thank you.
So.
No, I'm good, thank you. Okay, and Kathy, personnel.
Okay, Brooke is working with the Teachers Association to come up with a date for the teacher roundtable. We're gonna use the same format and questions from the last time, and we talked about superintendent's evaluation. We will have a workshop, Dorothy Presser will appear on April 11 at 5 o'clock.
It's for me?
Because we have, no, it's for all the new members.
April 11.
April 11, 5 o'clock, and she did it last year, and I think the new members found it helpful. And then we also gave, had a look at the job description for the assistant superintendent, and gave Brooke some feedback on that.
Yeah, I think that was a good one.
Yeah, it was, I thought, that's a good.
All right, correspondence, anything of note? Assuming if no changes at the consent agenda, the meeting minutes of February 28, 2018, and the warrant of March 16, 2018 are all set. Our items for the next agenda, and even though we all wanna take a vacation, we've got the Melanson Heath check-in, so that's the forensic auditor coming back and saying, here's where you are, things look good, moving on. The emergency response task force, response committee, are coming back?
Yeah, we can bring them back, or.
Where they're on here, I don't know why.
To be honest with you, I would rather put them off till about April or May, just because we've got a major safety summit coming up and stuff, so I think we'll.
Oh, that's a great idea.
We'll have further input to, we've got a number of things going right now that I'm really pleased with, so I think, all I wish to know to me might be better.
And I also want you to know, they've got the district legal services provider review on there, so that, and I'll give you, I'll make a recommendation, you guys can decide what you wanna do. Other than that, I just want you all to know, we are 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
So you need to pack like a janitor after all.
There you go.
All right.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So will you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all so much.